Thank you for your patience. We had a closed session meeting here preceding this meeting. We're gonna begin, we're waiting on Commissioner Gibbs, but we'll get started. Before we begin, I know Commissioner Levasseur has an announcement he wishes to make. Commissioner Levasseur?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Carol Hennessy asked me to pass along to folks, reminding them that next Monday is Memorial Day, and as the Memorial Society has done in years past, they've had volunteers out at the Oakview Cemetery, cleaning the graves of some of our veterans who have their final resting place there. This coming Saturday, just before Memorial Day, the Memorial Society will be placing flags next to those graves, and they're looking for volunteers to come out. Starts at 10 o'clock, there's a pond basically right in the cemetery after you enter in, and that's gonna be the meeting place. It'll be very easy to find if you come in, but we're certainly looking for and welcoming volunteers to help place the flags next to the graves of veterans. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner Levasseur. Well, I'm gonna call to order the May 20th, 2019 Royal Oak City Commission Meeting to order. We're gonna begin with an invocation given by myself, the mayor, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So I ask if you can stand, please do so. Let's take a moment and offer gratitude for the place we call home. We are grateful for the blessings of safety, community, stability, and a hopeful future. We are grateful for all those who contribute to the quality of life, and for those who champion our city at every level. We offer thanks to the professional women and men who keep us safe and our city vibrant. Let us celebrate and appreciate our blessings, and may we all work for a better future. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. This brings us to item number four, which is a proclamation designating June 19th as Gay Pride Month. Mr. Razor is here to accept this proclamation. He's a Rainbow Sponsor, which is the highest level of the inaugural Family Pride Event, which is to take place on June 12th here at the Royal Oak Farmers Market. Razor Law Firm is celebrating a 25th anniversary, and the Family Pride Planning Committee is honored to have them not only as a sponsor, but as enthusiastic partners in the pride event. Mr. Razor? I won't be able to walk down there and present you the proclamation, but I'll read it from here.
Thank you. Should I come up? Where should I go? Where would you like me?
That's a great question. Think this one through. If you want to stand there by the microphone so everyone can see, I'll read it from here, and we'll present it to you. So I apologize that my mobility is limited today. And thank you for making it out here tonight.
Certainly, Mayor. Thank you.
For those of you who don't know, Mr. Razor is a former Commissioner, and he helped champion the Human Rights Ordinance that our city passed a number of years ago with great pride. So he's here to accept this proclamation for making June Gay Pride Month here in Royal Oak. Whereas the city of Royal Oak supports the rights of every citizen to experience equality and freedom from discrimination, and in November 2013, voters in Royal Oak made a commitment by approving the Human Rights Ordinance, making the rights the laws of the city. And whereas all people, regardless of age, gender, identity, race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation, or physical challenges, have the right to be treated on the basis of their intrinsic value as human beings. And whereas, the city of Royal Oak accepts and welcomes people of diverse backgrounds, and believes a diverse population leads to a more vibrant community. And whereas, the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ communities contribute to the cultural, civic, and economic success of the city of Royal Oak. And whereas, we as a society at large are slowly embracing new definitions of sexuality and gender, we must also acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital to end discrimination and prejudice. And whereas, to acknowledge the efforts to bring awareness to the continuing evolution to the gay pride movement, the city of Royal Oak will display the rainbow flag representing light, healing, sun, calmness, art, and spirit in front of City Hall for the month of June. And whereas, to celebrate all families and family members, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and straight, as part of the Gay Pride Month, Royal Oak is honored to host the inaugural Family Pride Event, June 12th, 2019. Now therefore, be it resolved, I, Mayor Fornie, and the members of the Royal Oak City Commission hereby proclaim June 2019 as Gay Pride Month in Royal Oak, Michigan, and encourage our residents to reflect on the ongoing struggle for equality members of the LGBTQ community face, and celebrate the contributions that enhance our city. Very proud. This brings us to the proclamation, please.
I'd be happy to, Mayor. An honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Razor.
Thank you. If I could just say two words, folks. I am humbled to accept this award on behalf of Royal Oak's LGBTQ community. It was me sitting at this table with Commissioner Dubac, seconding the motion that brought the Human Rights Ordinance to Royal Oak. A lot of people thought that that would bring a lot of bad things. It turned into an issue. But at the end of the day, love and acceptance always wins over hate and divisiveness. Our community showed itself to be the type of welcoming community that's a great home for everybody, not just our LGBTQ community. So folks, thank you, Commission, Mayor, Manager, Attorney, and Ms. Ellis. A pleasure. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Razor. And today is also the 23rd anniversary of the Romer versus Evans decision by the U.S. Supreme Court as well. So it's fitting that we make this proclamation for June. So, thank you, Mr. Razor.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. This brings us to item number five, which is the Police Department Awards. Chief O'Donohue?
Maybe I'm gonna step up here.
Might be the first time you beat me in a race, sir.
All right.
Still stings.
All right. If I could have Sergeant Date Buzanowski, Sergeant Millard, Detective Murray, Officer Carr, Officer Stich, and Officer Yurkey. Well, we got a portion of them here today, huh? All right. On January 23rd, 2018, officers responded to a report of an attempt home invasion. Officers quickly responded and established a perimeter. While conducted an organized and systematic search of the area, officers located a suspect matching the description provided by the caller. The suspect attempted to evade officers, but was apprehended a short time later and arrested. A canine tracked the path of the suspect from the victim's home to the location where he was arrested. Through the diligent efforts of all those officers involved, a felony warrant for attempted home invasion, first degree, was issued by the Oakland County Prosecutor's Office. The suspect had a criminal history which include previous home invasions dating back to 1977. For their efforts, these officers are being awarded a certificate of commendation. Okay, next up, we have Detective Nelson, Officer Bobek, Officer Buckley, Officer Stich, and I know Officer Stanky is not gonna make it today. As they're making their way, I'll start. On January 26th, 2018, the driver of a vehicle, officers Bobek and Buckley stopped, fled, stopped and then fled on foot. Officer Buckley ran after the driver and apprehended him a few blocks away. Officer Stanky arrived and to assist with the traffic stop and discovered documents inside the vehicle that gave indication of fraudulent activity. While following the track of the driver, Officer Stich's canine, Jesse, alerted to a wallet the driver intentionally discarded when attempting to evade officers. Items inside the wallet and the vehicle pointed to the driver participating in fraudulent activity. Detective Nelson was subsequently assigned to investigate. Through the diligent work of each officer, each of these officers, the driver was found to be involved in a high-level identity theft, insurance fraud, and credit card fraud scheme. Search warrants revealed hundreds of identity theft victims and hundreds of thousands of dollars in insurance fraud. This investigation is still ongoing as Detective Nelson is seeking federal charges. Okay, Sergeant Millard, Sergeant Platt, Officer Cosmac, and I don't know if Officer Ratliff On February 27th, 2018, Royal Oak Police Midnight Shift responded to a report of an armed home invasion of an elderly couple. As a result of the swift response, officers were able to broadcast details to surrounding agencies. The suspects were stopped in a neighboring jurisdiction and taken into custody. The officers located items related to the home invasion inside their vehicle. Detectives were subsequently assigned to investigate and were able to determine that the robbery was orchestrated by the victim's granddaughter. The detectives were able to obtain confessions from each of the three suspects. As a result of this team effort involving the Royal Oak Police Department and Pleasant Ridge Police Department personnel, the Oakland County Prosecutor's Office issued a six-count felony warrant against all three suspects for armed robbery, first-degree home invasion, and felony firearm. For their efforts, these officers are being awarded certificates of commendation. Love? Is Officer Love here today? Not here. Okay, I'm gonna read this anyway. This is a life-saving award for Officer John Love. On November 10th, 2018, Officer Love responded to a 911 call reporting a man was stumbling in the street and had collapsed. Officer Love arrived and observed the man having a seizure and afterwards going lifeless. Not finding a pulse, he immediately began CPR and requested ROFD for assistance. Officer Love continued CPR until the fire department arrived on scene. There, the fire department confirmed that the man had reestablished a pulse and had been revived by Officer Love's actions. Officers Love's quick response and action saved this man's life, and he's being awarded a life-saving award. On October 31st, 2018, Officer Story responded to a 911 call reporting a woman in her home not breathing. Upon making entry into the residence, he found the woman not breathing without a pulse. He immediately began CPR and requested the fire department for assistance. Within a short time, excuse me, within a short time, her pulse and breathing were reestablished, and she was transported to the hospital alive. Officer Story's quick response and action saved this woman's life, and he's being awarded a life-saving award. The one making all the noise is Officer Buckley's daughter, I think so. Okay, on May 25th, 2018, Officer Buckley responded to the Center Street structure after several 911 calls received reported a woman standing on the edge of the seventh floor. Officer Buckley located the young woman and began to speak to her, eventually establishing a rapport and gaining her confidence. Ultimately, he convinced her to step down off the ledge. She was taken for mental health treatment and later expressed her gratitude to Officer Buckley for saving her life. Officer Buckley's initiative and compassion helped the young woman to feel her situation was less dire and allowed her to realize alternatives to ending her own life. For his efforts, Officer Buckley is being awarded a life-saving award.
On March 17th, 2018, Sergeant Tyson noticed a lone older man sitting by himself in a parking lot, and he approached him to check on his welfare. He told Sergeant Tyson he was homeless and had several medical issues. He admitted that he felt he had no purpose for life and was feeling hopeless. After inquiring further, Sergeant Tyson learned that the man had a loaded firearm in his backpack and confessed that he was going to use a weapon to commit suicide. Sergeant Tyson was able to convince the man to surrender his backpack and secure the loaded firearm. Sergeant Tyson then facilitated mental health assistance for him. Before leaving, Sergeant Tyson gave the man his business card and invited him to call any time he felt he needed to talk to someone. Sergeant Tyson's compassion and commitment, and his commitment to service has led to saving this person's life, and I'm very pleased to present a life-saving award.
In August of 2018, Officer Sylowsky completed her service as the Royal Oak Police Department's School Liaison Officer. The School Liaison Officer is a unique position which requires a special skill set that highlights mentoring, teaching, and encouraging. Although for most of, although for the most part, this is kind of an off-the-radar position, it is critically important in helping young people get back on track. During her tenure, Officer Sylowsky approached her assignment with much determination and dedication. Although technically assigned to the high school, she assisted the police department with nearly every case involving school-aged kids. Officer Sylowsky also completed several projects and initiatives, including the creation of the training manual for subsequent SLOs. Even though Officer Sylowsky completed her assignment, she continues to maintain the relationship she established, and uses her experience to educate and train her fellow officers on how to keep our schools safe. During her tenure as SLO, Officer Sylowsky has mentored countless students and has a meaningful and positive impact in their life. Officer Sylowsky embodies the Royal Oak Police Department's core values of loyalty, integrity, compassion, courage, and service, and I'm pleased, very pleased to give her the Distinguished Service Award.
Deputy Chief Riley. Deputy Chief Riley is receiving the Kenny Voncho Award. This award was named after a Royal Oak Police Lieutenant who died tragically in an off-duty motorcycle accident in 2002. This award is given to an employee who exemplifies the concept of teamwork, demonstrates exemplary efforts toward achieving the department goals, and is an inspiration and role model to others in the department. These traits clearly apply to Deputy Chief Bob Riley. Bob has been with the department since 1994 and plans to retire this August. He will be sincerely missed when he does. Bob has served in just about every capacity in the police department, from patrol officer, FTO, detective, sergeant, lieutenant, and deputy chief. No matter the position, Bob has maintained a reputation of being a thoughtful, diligent, and extremely dedicated employee. Bob has an attention to detail that few others have. Bob has served as the deputy chief for the last three and a half years, and I have come to rely on his knowledge and service. If you ask Bob a question, you can be assured you will get a well-researched and well-thought-out answer. Bob is a good leader who balances accountability with mentoring. Due to Bob's unquestionable integrity, he has developed a great rapport with officers and supervisors alike. Bob, thank you for accepting the challenge of command, and thank you for your extremely dedicated service. Need the glasses for this one. Okay, in 2018, Detective Nelson, while assigned to the Southeast Michigan Financial Crimes Task Force, deployed his task force and other state, local, and federal law enforcement agencies in an investigation involving numerous incidents of credit card fraud and skimming. Working in conjunction with crime analysts, detectives, and federal investigators, Detective Nelson was instrumental in identifying, pursuing, and ultimately charging members of an international criminal organization responsible for millions of dollars in credit card frauds. These investigations remain open, and Detective Nelson is diligently continuing to conduct follow-up on these investigations to assist the United States District Attorney in prosecuting this case. For his efforts in this case, we've issued him the Meritorious Service Award.
On September 18th, 2018, Officer Kristen Carr responded to a report of a suicidal woman attempting to jump onto the freeway. When Officer Carr arrived, the young woman was on the outer side of the overpassed fence barrier threatening to jump. Officer Carr quickly made a decisive move directly towards the woman and climbed out onto the overpass. Officer Carr took the young woman by the hand and convinced her to come back off the ledge. If the young woman decided to jump, or even if she slipped, there's little doubt Officer Carr would have been pulled down with her. Officer Carr risked her own safety to establish a physical contact with this distraught woman, and in doing so convinced her to come off the ledge. For her efforts, Officer Carr is being issued an award for bravery.
We have two special awards in the police department, our Civilian of the Year and our Officer of the Year. So first up is our Civilian of the Year, and it's Megan Sink. Megan was hired by the police department as my administrative assistant in 2015, and she does an amazing job. Some of Megan's responsibilities include sorting, distributing mail, preparing and collecting department pay sheets, processing all the paperwork for new hires, promotions, transfers, separations, attending all auxiliary meetings, preparing the minutes, preparing the minutes for crime prevention meetings, maintaining all special event files, ensuring all department expenses are properly tracked and authorized, handling training registrations, ensuring all officer training logs are up to date, processing overtime expense and expenses of officers assigned to the consortium units, and handling a whole host of other functions related to our two major special events, Woodward Dream Cruises and Art Spets and Eats. In addition to the duties above I've already listed, Megan handles a wide variety of administrative functions to help me do my job. Everything from proofing my reports, which is no small task, assisting with the budget, locating information from files, and et cetera. Most often, these are time-sensitive issues that require her to drop what she's doing and handle these requests immediately. Megan is also a gatekeeper of sorts and is responsible for ensuring all officers, sergeants, lieutenants, and deputy chiefs follow the proper procedures and guidelines. Often, this means she'll need to spend extra time either reworking requests, going back to resolve or fix a problem that was handled improperly, or helping teach another employee the proper procedure. Megan handles all her responsibilities professionally and competently, all the while keeping a cheerful, upbeat disposition with an easygoing personality that makes for a great work environment. Megan is a huge help and is an extremely valued employee, and she's one of the reasons the department runs so well. Okay, Brett Nelson, if you want to come on down once again. There should be little doubt why Brett Nelson has been named our Officer of the Year. But I'll just read some of these. Brett Nelson is currently assigned to the Southeast Michigan Financial Crimes Task Force as a task force agent. He has been in this position since January 2018. Detective Nelson handles most financial fraud crimes received in Royal Oak. He handles his caseload with expertise, motivation, and a desire that is unparalleled in investigative circles. He has established a network of state, local, and federal law enforcement agencies that he smartly collaborates with to ensure that all investigations are thorough, just, and timely. Detective Nelson presents himself and performs in a professional manner and confidently assists all those who seek his expertise and assistance. He is currently working on a substantial caseload, is currently working a substantial caseload, and will soon bring to fruition a case involving theft and medical fraud on a large scale in several states and jurisdictions. Detective Nelson continues to provide service as an elected member to the municipal pension board, and serves in a union capacity where his demeanor and work ethic have earned him praise and a cohesive relationship with the police administration. Detective Nelson's diligence, perseverance, and investigative aptitude make him a valued member to the police department and a beacon of professionalism in any organization. Brett, congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Thank you, Chief O'Donohue. How about another round of applause for all of our fine, hard-working women and men of the Royal Oak Police Department. We're so proud of you. So proud of you. I mean, the statistics show that you guys do an amazing professional job, okay? But stories that we heard here tonight exemplify the passion and compassionate nature that you have, serving the public selflessly, and we're so grateful. Thank you very much. All right, that brings us to the Employee Years of Service Award, which is item number six. Mr. Johnson, do we just have one this evening?
We just have one. Do you call up forward?
Mr. Callahan. There he is. Usually, he pops out of the back door here, like Batman.
We have relatively recently started doing these at city commission meetings, and what we normally do is give out the pins that actually represent the more significant years. In Matt's case, he's actually got 23 years of service, but he's getting his 20-year pin. So, congratulations, Matt.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
I just want to add that Mr. Callahan has served this city honorably, and I know when I first came on board, we had very interesting discussions. And I gotta tell you, Mr. Callahan is an expert and a professional at his trade. He is responsible for helping with the strategy to get our roads finally paved here in Royal Oak and looking at innovative ways to do it. He's always been a champion of safety and has been instrumental in making sure that we have different traffic calming measures throughout the city, and works with individuals that have concerns from speeders to, you know, no parking, you name it. He uses his expertise and experience and wisdom to help coach not just us, but the community on, you know, the pros and cons of any solution. So he's a great engineer. Mr. Callahan, we're grateful for your service. Thank you. All right, this brings us to public comment. Just a few words about public comment before we begin. The city commission values and relies on the input of our fellow citizens to make decisions. Now is a time set aside for the public to address the city commission on any city-related issues, whether or not they're on the agenda tonight or not. I ask that comments be directed to the commission as a whole and not to individual commissioners. In addition to public comment, there will be one public hearing at tonight's meeting. If you're here to comment on the removal of trees with Dutch elm disease, you may wait until the public hearing is opened, and you can comment at that time, and all the rules apply for that hearing as they do here for public comment. If you wish to speak tonight at public comment or at the public hearing, please wait until recognized by me, the mayor. Come up to the podium. For the record, we do ask that you state your name and address. And be mindful that the city commission wants to hear from anyone who wishes to speak tonight, so comments are limited to three minutes or less, and we have a timer here at the podium to help you keep track of your time. If you don't wish to speak tonight, that's all right. Feel free to reach out to us via email, et cetera. In fact, we got a number of emails today that I'm aware of that we tried to respond to, as many as possible. Please note that the city commission will not respond directly to questions during public comment. However, we are taking notes and will address the questions when the agenda topic is discussed, or if it's not on the agenda tonight. We'll take it up with the proper city department, and our city manager's also taking notes and follows up on matters as necessary. So with that, who wishes to speak first tonight at public comment? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Ellen Nappo, and I, where I live, is that where you?
Yeah, just, yeah.
1841 Chester Road, and I'm speaking on the Pride Month resolution. Well, my first comment would be that I hope that we have a flag-raising ceremony on June 1st. I know Ferndale has one, Hazel Park has one. Okay, here's my comment. I've lived in Royal Oak since 2004, so I've seen many changes in those 15 years. One of the most meaningful to me personally was the passage of our nondiscrimination ordinance in 2013, which amended our civil rights ordinance by prohibiting discrimination based on sexual orientation and gender identity, needed because our state civil law does not have these explicit protections. And the reason it was on the ballot in the first place was that after the city commission voted to enact the ordinance, people opposed to protecting the civil rights of me and the rest of the LGBTQ community obtained enough signatures to put the measure on the ballot and leave it up to the voters. It was a sometimes bitter campaign, but volunteers and community members really showed up, and the proposal passed, though not overwhelmingly. The haters didn't win that day. As they say, love wins. In 2001, a similar measure had failed. Times change, attitudes change. And lest anyone think that wasn't significant, or that LGBTQ people were- And lest anyone think that wasn't significant or that LGBTQ people were being afforded special rights, let me give you one real-world example. A good friend who's lived in Royal Oak for many years was at a gas station in Madison Heights several months ago. When she got out of her car, the attendant gave her a good look and promptly shut off the gas because she is transgender. That kind of thing happens all the time. In Royal Oak, there would be repercussions. So last month, I heard from Mayor Fournier that someone had approached the city about a pride event for families the following year. The young man and his husband were planning to adopt and thought a pride event would be a fun thing to have during Pride Month. "Sign me up," I said. He also announced it at the State of the City address, which you may recall. So we've been hard at work since then, a small group of us, David, the individual whose idea this was, Carol and Judy in the city office, former head librarian Mary, and our current head librarian Emily. We have a great lineup of entertainment: drag queen storytime, a performance by Sing Out Detroit, a bounce house face painting, plenty of kid-friendly family fun, all at the farmer's market in conjunction with the monthly food truck rally. Plus nonprofits like Affirmations, Stand With Trans, and the Royal Oak Democratic Club are sponsors, as are numerous businesses including Razor Law Firm, 515 Toyology. Wednesday, June 12, 5:15, 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Please join us. One more quick thing. And thank you to the mayor and the City Commission for supporting this endeavor. I really am proud to live in Royal Oak.
Thank you, Ms. Nappo. Thank you for all your efforts helping pull together the event. Thank you. We'll go with the hand right here in the front. Yes. I know the lights are bright on us, but trust me, from this perspective, it's sometimes hard to see all the waving hands, so reach high.
Well, you do have a packed house, so I get it. Hi, good evening. My name is Molly Tamilevich. I am the Michigan State Director for the Humane Society of the United States, and I am a former Royal Oak resident, but now I live in Hazel Park. Do you still need my address?
Sure.
Yeah? Okay. It's, yeah, 317 East Madge Avenue. So I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I want to thank the Commission for also taking on the issues of puppy mills in the community, in the city of Royal Oak. My organization fights the big fights when it comes to animal cruelty, and puppy mills are one of our biggest campaigns. It's one of the places where we see the worst animal abuse. And we have found that the most effective strategy for combating puppy mills across the country is to introduce ordinances like the ordinance that's on the agenda tonight, which would prohibit the retail sale of dogs, cats, and rabbits in the city of Royal Oak. When we introduce a retail ban like this, we are effectively cutting off the pipeline that pumps puppy-milled puppies from the mill itself into communities. And I want to commend Royal Oak for taking on this measure for a couple of reasons. One, Royal Oak's kind of a prime real estate for a potential puppy store to open up. You are an affluent community. You've got a lot of storefronts, a lot of dog lovers here, and I think that you could potentially kind of get ahead of the game by showing a statement that you're not interested in welcoming this kind of business here in the city. Also, I think that because you're an influential community and you carry some gravitas in the Southeast Michigan kind of environment, that it would set a great tone for the rest of the state in prioritizing animal welfare legislation. We've seen that there are about 300, around 30305 ordinances like this passed around the country, and the pet store industry, like Petland, is really paying attention. They're very effective tools for taking a stand against puppy mills. And when I lived here, I know Royal Oak is a community of dog lovers. There are dogs everywhere. We're a pet-friendly community, pet-friendly city. So I just wanted to give a couple of, like, facts about puppy mills, about the danger that they pose to the community. They're not just bad for animals. They're actually a consumer protection risk. They carry with them the risk of disease outbreaks, such as the campylobacter outbreak that was documented by the CDC earlier this year and actually affected someone in Novi who came down with an infection. There are predatory lending schemes that often take advantage of consumers. There are often sick puppies that are sold. So I think that adopting an ordinance like the one that's on the agenda tonight would be a really progressive stance for the city of Royal Oak, and I think that it would show other communities in the state of Michigan that this is the direction that the state needs to go in terms of animal welfare. And as a former Royal Oak resident myself, I think it would be great to unequivocally stand against the puppy mill industry and adopt this ordinance. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Tamilevich. Just a reminder, everybody, I know we always want to clap and show our appreciation for strong public comment, but there may be some people with opposing views in the audience, and it may intimidate them from coming up, so just a reminder. Not that I see any for the puppy mill ordinance, but just in case.
Good evening. My name's Linda Loopy, and I live at 4015 Auburn in Royal Oak. Mr. Mayor, and Commissioners, and city officials, I'm here to provide you an update on our neighborhood's blighted house at 4303 North Verona Circle. The house is still for sale, although the actual for-sale sign has been missing for almost two weeks. The broker has been notified about the missing sign. The grass has been cut, one of the tree limbs removed from the front yard, but leaves and branches still litter the roof in the backyard, and the asking price has been reduced. In sometimes heated communications with the broker, I have been cited as the reason that the property's not selling. Prospective buyers are too afraid to make a bid on the property due to my rabble-rousing. Apparently, 11 years of neglect of this property is not the reason for the property not selling. I was then asked by the broker to write a letter with my expectations for this property for a prospective new owner. In that letter, I listed all the wonderful events sponsored by our Neighborhood Association and the four parks in the neighborhood. I also addressed the controversies surrounding the property. If and when this house changes hands, I realize that there will be a period of no action. It takes time to evaluate the current structure. It takes time to line up contractors. It takes time to get approvals and permits. I would persist, however, in making sure that all code is followed. I would hope that any new owner would do a better job in maintaining the exterior of this property by allowing spring and fall cleanups, cutting grass on a regular basis, shoveling snow as required, and generally be a respectful owner to our neighborhood. I provided that welcome letter to Mr. Moses 10 days ago. I want to thank Commissioner Gibbs for her initial outreach and Commissioner Macy for touring the property. I want to thank Commissioner LaBossa for touring and helped me formulate a plan to move forward and his follow-up. I want to thank Commissioner Dubach for meeting with me and arranging meetings with city officials and the mayor to discuss what can be done at the city level to address blighted houses in our city. The amendment to the property registration ordinance to be discussed at tonight's meeting is a direct result of that meeting. After speaking with Jason Craig this morning, it appears that some of the new language may be applicable to this blighted house. 4303 North Verona Circle should be Priority One on the city's list of vacant properties after 11 years of neglect. I think we can all agree that it is certainly the worst house in the city, but certainly not the only vacant house in the city that needs to be addressed. I do, however, have concerns with the reoccupancy ordinance. Mr. Craig and I discussed these proposed revisions this morning, and he assures me that this is a 15-to-20-minute inspection using a checklist to still be determined. He assures me that turnaround time should be no more than 48 hours. Mr. Craig indicates that this ordinance would protect potential homeowners because most inspectors really have no legitimate expertise and simply get credentialed on the internet. I look forward to hearing the discussion on both of these topics tonight. If nothing else, I have proven to the owner, the owner's registered agent, the property management company, the listing broker, elected city officials, and city employees that I intend to persist to see a final resolution to this blighted house in my neighborhood. My kids can tell you I can be persistent. I look forward to working with you all to address the citywide issue of long-term vacant housing in our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Loopy. All right. I see a hand in the back, in the blue.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Monica Sype. I live at 626 Simms Avenue, and I just came from the dentist today, so between my nervousness and my small and numb chin, I apologize. I'm here to talk about the ordinance, about the ban on the sale of animals obtained from puppy mills. I fully support having an ordinance like that. Puppies, cats, rabbits, they're bred in commercial facilities and backyard breeders, and they endure cruelty for years. They spend their entire lives in small, rare cages, filthy conditions. The mother and father animals are treated as breeding machines, nonstop breeding. Their young are treated as products, no vet care. There's inbreeding, which causes health issues, the constant fear and stress. Other states have actually passed laws to prohibit puppy mills or sales to pet stores from puppy mills. And pet stores don't have to sell animals in order to be successful. Responsible breeders don't sell to pet stores because they want to meet their buyers. There's code of ethics that national breed clubs require their members, so they can't sell to pet stores. And then there's animals that are sold from breeders that have Animal Welfare Act violations. I have personal firsthand knowledge from having a puppy from a puppy mill. When I was little, my parents got a puppy, and she was near death's door. She almost died. And when my mom... My parents took her to the vet, and they called the pet store, and the pet store told her to just bring the puppy back for a refund, which we would never, ever do. And then she... With my mom's good care and cooking her meals every day, she recovered, so we were lucky. Also, there's people that might worry about not getting breeds that they prefer, and I have firsthand knowledge of that, too. A few years ago, my boyfriend, he got an English Bulldog from a local shelter, and I also adopted a Beagle from our own Royal Oak animal shelter. So if you're looking for a specific animal, you don't have to worry that. You can go to a shelter, and when you go to a shelter, you're saving a life. So there's no need for pet stores to support and keep in business the large-scale or backyard mass breeding facilities. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sype. I see a... I think it's Mr. Halleck right there. The flannel I see right...
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Tom Halleck, 210 North Center. Mayor, I hope your surgery was successful and works quickly for you, because I... That's a drag.
It's literally a drag.
Yeah, it's not comfortable. I'd like to also thank the police for all their outstanding work. We're very lucky to have an excellent police force that represents us well and takes care of us. Item 16, the animals from puppy mills. Fortunately, it doesn't apply to any of the businesses in Royal Oak, which is wonderful, but I have zero issues with doing a preventative strike to make sure that doesn't happen. I've had cats for 44 years since I got on my own, and all of them have been adopted. I would never buy from a mill. It's just unsafe, so I do hope you pass that. I'd like to speak to item number 14 regarding the home inspection. I find this unnecessary, an intrusive overreach. It would require more staffing at taxpayer expense, just being as there's 500 homes currently up for sale in Royal Oak. People can expect very lengthy delays in order to have these inspections, which could cause a lot of hardship for people who have to leave and have to move, might force short sale, cash sales, causing them money, and result in more tear downs because it makes it a cheap house, which would also increase the taxes, I realize, to the city, but that's a poor way to get it. Since my last point is kind of obvious, I'm just curious as to whether tearing down, increasing tear downs was part of the consideration. I would hope it was not. It also seems kind of like a plan to raise assessments by getting into everybody's house. So I would really recommend that you do not follow through this. This is not a common ordinance. Everybody puts in on a house bid. They always have an inspection requirement, and that is sufficient. I don't see any real need for this. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Halleck. Could be an opposing view. Just a reminder, out of respect to anyone that may disagree, you know, we go over this every week. I just appreciate the...
Good evening. Mike Rapinski, 3152 Parker in Royal Oak. Apologize for the hat. I just got off the golf course a couple hours ago. Got a bad hat here.
Thank you for not showing us your hat here.
Don't want to see what's under there. So I also would like to speak to item number 14, the reoccupancy ordinance. I just became aware of it this morning, printed off all 10 pages, and have been going over I don't know where to start, other than to say it's a bad idea. I also echo Mr. Halleck's views on, you know, the delays that could occur in housing transactions. When we get right down to it, as a real estate agent, you all know that I've been in this business for a while. What's going to happen here is this is going to be government interference with a real estate transaction between a buyer and a seller. These are two parties that are engaged in a legal contract to buy and sell property. We don't need to be getting involved in their transaction by creating unnecessary delays, interference. They already got to go through title search and title insurance in most cases. Most of my inspectors, the ones that I've worked with, as both on the buy side and the sell side, are qualified people. These are inspectors who know what they're doing, know what they're talking about, and will point out any deficiencies in the houses to the parties involved, and they work it out. In 99% of the cases, it gets worked out. And if there's anything that's illegal or not to code, it's pointed out in these inspections. We don't need to be involved in this transaction. If you were to ask 100 retail... Realtors, excuse me, 100 Realtors in a room what they felt about this, 99 of them would say this is a bad idea. There are communities in this town that have similar ordinances, City of Detroit, City of Dearborn. Center Line is one that I'm quite familiar with, and all it does is mess up the works when you're dealing with property transactions, and it's a deterrent. In the long run, it could affect property values in our city, and I don't think anybody wants that. Again, you all know how to reach... I don't have enough time in three minutes to explain all my points and concerns in this ordinance, but at minimum, table it, study it further, take it back, and, you know, if it ended up in the wastebasket, I wouldn't mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rapinski. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. To reiterate his point, if you ask 100 Realtors, I'm about to let you ask 9,000. My name is Al Block, 812 South Main Street. I am the co-owner of RE/MAX First in Royal Oak, and I also serve as the president of the Greater Metropolitan Association of Realtors. As you may be aware, GMAR is the largest local trade association in Michigan, representing over 9,000 Realtors in Metro Detroit, 606 of whom live or work in Royal Oak. I'm here this evening to reiterate our opposition to the proposed reoccupancy ordinance. As Realtors, we pride ourselves on being subject matter experts, so we work to promote the interests of home and other real property rights. Thus, our interest in sharing our experience with certificates of occupancy and point-of-sale inspections. As we've outlined over the last few days, the proposed ordinance jeopardizes and places an unnecessary burden on the exchange of real property by adding additional barriers that extend an already lengthy and cumbersome process. It is worth noting that the proposal is also unnecessary because both buyers and sellers have the option of privately inspecting the property and to then renegotiate the terms of the agreement back out or move forward. Along with these reasons, we are also very concerned the City Building Department has seriously underestimated the logistical undertaking of adopting a certificate of occupancy and point-of-inspection model. If this system were in place in 2018, 1,560 residential properties would have been forced to go through this process, meaning the city would have been responsible for conducting at least eight inspections per day during the height of the year. There are also at least 653 active or pending residential properties in Royal Oak as of this morning, all of which would also be forced to go through this unnecessary and duplicative process in a matter of weeks. Simply put, the city is in no position to effectively and efficiently implement this system. The adoption of this ordinance would result in chaos for the Royal Oak real estate market, and that is a term I don't use lightly. With more than 9,000 Realtors from GMAR who are doing business in communities across the region with this model in place, our members can attest to how poorly these systems are managed, the undue financial burden they place on buyers and sellers, and how often they can unnecessarily terminate the exchange of property. On behalf of GMAR, we urge you to vote no on moving the reoccupancy ordinance to second reading, and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Block. See Mr. Karloski in the back?
Hello, Rick Karloski.
Hello, Rick Karloski, 419 Virginia. Hang on to your hats, because I'm going to agree with Mike Rapinski for the stop clock kind of a thing. But yes, he's exactly right. We don't need this, the item 14, the reoccupation ordinance. There is plenty of buy and sell and mutual agreement between buyer and seller. We do not need this government to be putting its hand in it. Secondly, I don't understand how this even got here. If this was supposed to be, if we were supposed to be updating our codes because we couldn't do anything about dilapidated vacant property, item 14 is sure as hell not going to, you have anything to do with that. And I also question the insinuation that there are bad inspectors out there, just get their credentials online. Well, I tell you what, there's a whole lot of bad inspectors I know that you, that work for governments as well, and I can only say that there was, we had a, we had a sign-off on a building, a condo building on 11th and Main that was completely signed off, and suddenly the south, the southwest corner started to fall into the street. So before anybody starts questioning the integrity of anybody, let's, let's get clear that there's mistakes made all the time. Secondly, on the rental, the rental part or something, I don't know what this is doing either, other than getting a actual name to send a letter to. It doesn't require, and apparently you want it, the intent is to have people have an inspection before you change, you sell your house, but if you want to rent it, you can just go and rent it. I mean, the place could be illegal wiring, it could have a bad furnace, could have the whole nine yards, but there's no requirement for any kind of inspection on a rental whatsoever prior to a rental person being in there. Now, I know there was a state law or a court hearing that said you can't go in there once you have a tenant, but there's nothing here that, that says you have to register your house before you're, before you're going to rent it, and if you don't, you're going to get fined, and you will be fined until it is inspected, and you have to figure out how you're going to get your tenant to agree to that. Because right now, it's just, well, you got to register it. So what if I don't? There's no fines, there's no nothing. It's just, well, I'm not going to register it. It's the same thing with their licensing issue now. I had a rental next to me that was not, was not licensed, and the city sent him a letter, but he already had a tenant in there. So if we really want to get serious about rentals, I suggest you take a look at what Warren does. Warren requires that when you pull a license, that you have an inspection before you rent to a tenant, and, and some teeth in it. That would really help our neighborhoods, is to make sure that rentals we have are up to snuff and leave the transactions between two, two, two people buying and selling a house to themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Karloski.
Good evening. My name's Lindsay Warren. I live at 1137 Pinehurst Avenue. I'm going to switch it up a little bit and invite everyone to a party tonight. I serve as a volunteer on the Royal Oak Crime Prevention Council, and we're throwing our annual citywide block party. It's coming up on Tuesday, June 4th, from 6:08 PM, right over here on the west lot at the farmer's market. This event is not just for families, it's for seniors, it's for singles, it's for everyone. It was a huge success last year. We had the Royal Oak Police Department out with their cars and the dog, police dog Riker. We had the fire department out with their trucks. We had a bunch of construction vehicles that children could climb in, like diggers and that sort of thing. We have the Royal Oak Library come out, we have the Royal Oak Community Coalition come out. Of course, we've got our Royal Oak Safe Neighborhoods there with information on your various block, neighborhood block watches. And then, of course, the big hit was the face painting and balloon art. And then, of course, in addition to all that, we'll have food. We have a food truck rally. The Mean Weenie, Treat Dreams and Shredders will be there, and I want to also give a shout out to Fifth Avenue, who was nice enough to sponsor this event and help cover the costs. Before I go, another hat that I wear is I work part-time in animal welfare, so I wanted to thank you for the consideration of an ordinance that would ban the sales of puppy mill puppies, kittens and rabbits. That would be a wonderful thing to set that precedent in our community. So I want to thank you for that, and I will leave these flyers for our party downstairs. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Warren. Okay, Mr. Von Everstein.
Hi, my name is Kurt Von Everstein, 3105 Claussen. I'm here to talk about item 11 in the consent agenda, item L, sorry. Designation of nonprofit status to the Royal Oak Schools Foundation. We've kind of been there since 1993, but it's our fault. We hadn't applied to you guys to actually sanction it. It's great. So on behalf of David Dursum, our RO SF President, and Scott Brown, Vice President, and myself, Kurt Von Everstein, Treasurer, I'd like to thank you guys and the mayor and the administration for having us on the agenda tonight. Basically, our past efforts have brought technology and internet to those in need during the economic collapse of 2008. We came up with a $40,000 plan to bring in internet service to those parents that had lost their jobs and to keep their kids equipped with laptops, things like that during that time. You got to remember 2008, 2007, the smartphone was really invented, so this is something that they needed desperately to keep up with their schooling and to check in, no emergencies, things like that. So we also picked up the slack in equipping the Dondaro Auditorium sound system, and we also supplemented the Ross Pack effort to put in the auditorium seats at the Kimball Auditorium. And the Royal Oak Foundation also has been doing this annually for the last nine years. It's about $9,500. Part of it goes to the Jump Start Music Program for 5th graders to get a, get a head start over the summer and be ready for 6th grade band and orchestra. And we also have the Dan Champagne scholarships, Gary Vanek and the Interact Club, I believe it is. And we just finished $6,000 for each of the nine school buildings. We had a curated, we appealed to them to give us ideas, and they got $6,000 to implement interactive furnishings, equipment for technology in certain schools and scientific lab equipment that would work in the digital realm, so that they could actually hook it to a computer, do things microscopically, things like that in the high school. So, all in all, we are very thankful to our citizens and our businesses, our administration and the city of Royal Oak, who have recognized us and have donated to us for our various fundraisers. And this designation will actually help us in the future to even raise more money. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Von Everstein, and thank you for your work with the foundation. As a parent of three kids in the school district, I know it's important work, and we appreciate it.
Oh, it's, it's great. I love it. Thank you.
Actually, make that nine among us up here.
Hey, good evening. Mike Nelson, 4102 Yorba Linda, Royal Oak. I want to keep this real short and just echo some of the words that other people have said here tonight, and I go against item number 14. I'd like to add that I believe that this would be the only community in Oakland County that would implement such an ordinance, and I strongly urge the council to vote no against this. That's it. Thanks.
Mr. Nelson?
Good evening. Bella Morales, 2722 North Vermont. So I'm here, I'm going to talk about Pride. So I kept talking about, I was talking to my campaign, about what I should talk about, and I thought, well, I could talk about transgender people, and I could mention how 1 in 4 transgender people are victims of violence, and that number only increases if you're a person of color. And I thought, well, I could also talk about how in 2018, 28 transgender people were shot and killed. And I thought, you know, I think I'd rather talk about Malaysia Brooke. Malaysia Brooke, a couple weeks ago, was a victim of a mob-style assault. She rear-ended someone, and that someone pulled her out of her car at gunpoint and started to kick her and punch her, and after a couple minutes, other men joined in the attack. The attack took place in the middle of the day with other bystanders, and nobody stepped in to help her. After she was released from the hospital, there was a march, and at the march, she said, well, I'm so happy that I'm here and I'm alive and I survived, and this is not a memorial for me. Well, on Saturday, Malaysia Brooke was found dead, shot and killed in Dallas. So I'm very happy I don't live in Dallas, instead I live in Royal Oak, where we have a human rights ordinance and where people who identify as transgender or people who identify as just different and just people can walk through downtown and not feel unsafe because they are safe here in Royal Oak. So thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Morales.
Sue Fabian, 316 Midland, Royal Oak. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I am here in opposition to item number 14, the Certificate of Occupancy Proposed Ordinance Amendment. I read through all of the sections. There are some sections I agree with and some sections that I don't. I believe that section 5, for instance, the condemnation section, which is the largest part of this, is, is fine, but there are other sections that are very troubling to me. For instance, in section 15, you go over the issue of dampness. It's a very ambiguous term. What does that mean? I have no idea. Bathroom privacy, I mean, that's incredibly overreaching. Lighting on houses, 75-watt bulbs and not shining into a neighbor's yard, how are you going to enforce that? That seems to me to be an enforcement headache and, again, very overreaching. There are more things that I could say about this. There's no, for instance, there's no express limitation on houses that are about to be sold or transferred. And so talk on my street is, does it allow code inspectors to come up to any house at any time and say, hey, I want to enter your house and look at what you have? There's no express limitation, and so people have that fear. I think overall, even if this thing passes, it's incredibly bad personal, or not, PR. It's incredibly bad PR for you as a commission, because it does feel overreaching. It feels, I've heard people say Gestapo-like. I mean, this is how it is landing on people, especially on the heels of the sidewalk program, where this place was full so many times, and everything went on deaf ears, especially in light of the water survey, where government was going into every home to see how water was being used. And so this seems to me, again, there are portions of it I don't have problems with, there are portions of it I agree with, but overall, I think it's a very poor ideal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fabian.
John Maithen, 2902 Elmhurst. I'm here tonight in my role as a board member of the Michigan World War II Legacy Memorial. We have an item on the consent agenda, item K, against affirmation of our status of nonprofit, which we have, but we need it by the city in order to get a raffle license for one of our fundraising events. So I just ask for your support in that, and like to invite everybody to this event, or one of the events that we're doing. This year, we wanted to have an event in commemoration of the 75th anniversary of D-Day. And what we have is a speaker coming in, is George Lutz Jr. He's the son of one of the vets that was in the Band of Brothers series, and he's kept up with them, and he meets with them, and he's got to come tell his father's stories and some of the items that his, his father has had. The event's going to be on June 19th from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Kilgore Scottish Center. Those of us who've been around a while, the old Mountain Jacks, to bring back an old name, at Rochester and Stevenson there. Food will be provided by Mission Barbecue. There is no fee for it. We will take donations while we're there, but you do need to register online at our website. Our website is www.michiganw2memorial.org. If you go on that website, it also will give you a chance to look at, you know, what the memorial is, the different elements of the memorial, and the other events that our group are, is doing. We also have relatively new, newly on there, a 3D model or fly-through that you can click on and watch the video of what we hope to have, you know, for the full memorial when it's all built. So I'd invite you to that and just ask for your support tonight on the, on the agenda. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Commission, for this opportunity to speak briefly in support of the proposed ordinance to ban the retail sale of dogs, cats and rabbits here in Royal Oak. My name is Ann Griffin. I am not a Royal Oak resident. I live at 20501 Urban Street in St. Clair Shores, but I am the Director of Advocacy for the Michigan Humane Society. And so I'm appearing here tonight on behalf of the MHS, which is the largest and oldest animal welfare organization in the state of Michigan. We have hundreds of thousands of supporters statewide, and certainly a large number of them right here in Royal Oak, where we have lots and lots of animal lovers. And I've certainly been very encouraged by a lot of the testimony we've heard already tonight. So at the risk of maybe repeating a couple of things, I want to mention that MHS is strongly opposed to puppy mills and the sale of puppies and other animals from commercial breeding operations for a variety of reasons. First of all, as you've heard, these animals often suffer from illnesses, from parasites, from behavioral and genetic problems resulting from poor breeding, and they're sold to unsuspecting members of the public through pet shops, and those people then have very little recourse. Some of these diseases that these animals have can also be transmitted to humans. Dogs used for breeding in puppy mills are forced to live in unsanitary cramped enclosures. They're deprived of exercise, they're not given veterinary care, they're not given fresh food or water. Breeding dogs are often bred as often as possible for as long as possible, and when they're no longer useful, they're discarded. Puppy mill puppies are not properly socialized to humans and are not exposed to a normal home environment before they are purchased by a new family, and that makes their transition to a new family that much more difficult. MHS believes that the issue of whether pet shops should be able to sell these animals from commercial breeding enterprises should be a matter of local control, and it's left in the hands of individual communities, which are in the best position to act in their citizens' best interests. And in fact, we asserted that argument several times during the last legislative session in the state of Michigan, in the 2017, 2018 legislative session, when two bills were introduced that would have greatly benefited commercial breeding facilities by preventing local units of government from banning retail pet sales. These bills were ultimately vetoed by Governor Snyder, who agreed that retail pet sales are a question of local and not state control. When a national retail pet store chain that sells puppy mill puppies tries to protect its own interests by introducing legislation preventing local government from regulating businesses in its community, then you know that these local ordinances are striking accord. They're having an impact, and such local ordinances, as Molly said earlier, are really the best way to stop the flow of puppy mill puppies into a community. The Michigan bills that were introduced last session caused some confusion because they purported to impose some higher standards on these commercial breeders. But those standards relied in large part on the USDA standards and USDA enforcement, and unfortunately, that process is not as thorough, as consistent, or as stringent as it needs to be to protect animals in breeding facilities. The Office of Inspector General and Congress have both called on the USDA to do a better job enforcing the Animal Welfare Act and related regulations to protect animals in commercial breeding operations, but the USDA's own records show that it's doing a decliningly worse job over the years, and they did less in 2018 than they did in 2016 or 2017. Commercials, conditions, excuse me, in USD-inspected, commercial breeding facilities can be absolutely deplorable, and if you're not familiar, you just have to Google puppy mills to see images of USD-inspected facilities that are truly heartbreaking. So in the absence of effective federal oversight, we believe that it's best for local units of government to close the door on the sale of puppies from wholesalers should they choose to do so, and we thank you very much for considering the ordinance.
Thank you, Ms. Warren. See a hat, or a hand way in the back? Yes. I'm sure there's a hat back there, too, but I meant to say hand.
Mrs. Schunk, 233 East Webster Road, and I'm here to speak on the occupancy ordinance, specifically the latter half of Article 3, the last half sentence. specifically the latter half of Article 3, the last half sentence, about the power that assessors have. If a Royal Oak citizen or homeowner, specifically the homeowner, calls 911, it's an implied invitation for police or fire to enter onto the premises of the private property. When police or fire arrive on scene at said private residential property, the citizens then have the right to refuse service or invite the police or fire in the door and into the private home. This occupancy ordinance is contradictory of the aforementioned giving the assessors or inspectors more power and rights than police and fire personnel. Homeowners that do not allow assessors, inspectors into your home, residents can be subject to fines up to $500 and a possibility of 90 days in jail. This truly is a travesty of justice. I respectfully request you, the commission, vote no on this occupancy ordinance. Good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Schunk. Yes, ma'am.
I couldn't, I don't know, I don't know.
Good evening. My name is Maureen Moore, and I live in St. Clair Shores, 19812 Rosedale. I'm here with Molly, and Ann is somebody who wants to speak about the puppy mill ordinance. I'm not a resident of Oakland County. I'm a resident of Macomb County, and I'm a very longtime volunteer with numerous animal welfare organizations all around the state. I also am a reporter for the Macomb Daily, and I write an animal welfare column for that particular newspaper. I want to thank Royal Oak for being so progressive in fighting for the lives of the dogs, the cats, the rabbits, and fighting against any kind of support of puppy mills. This is a very progressive community. And once again, I do not live in Oakland County, but I shop in Oakland County. I'm an avid shopper in Royal Oak, and I spend a lot of money in your community. And with this being a community that is very supportive of cats, dogs, and animal welfare, that would make it so much more welcoming for me to shop in your community versus a city that was not as supportive for animals. So, I just want to go on record as being very proud to be among all the people here that are speaking in support of this ban, and I hope that you move forward with that. And thank you for wanting to fight for the animals and for their welfare rather than against that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Ms. Ellison?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, and everybody else at the horseshoe. I am here, as you might guess, oh, Jody Ellison, 1309 Mohawk, and I'm also the Shelter Manager at the Royal Oak Animal Shelter. I am here to speak on the proposed ordinance to ban the sale of dogs, cats, and rabbits in Royal Oak. I'm not going to go back over the puppy mill stuff. I think you've heard a lot of that. I'm going to talk more practically from a municipal standpoint. When all of those animals with behavioral and health problems are no longer being supported by the families who bought them from the retail outlet, where do you think they come? They come to the shelters. They come to the rescues. In the shelter, in the Royal Oak shelter, we are supported by donations, and there are also some municipal funds that go toward the support of the animals. I would really prefer that the animals that we are taking care of are animals who were sourced responsibly and ethically, not from puppy mills, not from kitty mills, not from bunny mills. We have a lot of accountability through the shelter and rescue system. We require everyone who wants to adopt from us to apply, whether you're a city commissioner, the mayor, state representative, it doesn't matter. You apply, you get approved, and then you adopt. We have a record. We have a relationship that we build with our adopters because we feel it is very important that we be there as a support for not only the animals, but for the people who adopt them. And we want this not to be transactional. We want these animals to be part of these families' lives for the rest of their lives. There's not a lot more that I think I need to say. I think everything else has been said. But I would hope that you look at these practical issues in addition to the ethical issues as some important reason to support the ban and these sales. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ellison. Who's next?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Commissioner. My name is Terri Myers, 1915 Roland Avenue. I'm here to talk about my disgust of Campbell Road from 10 Mile to Fourth Street. I'm also here asking for your help. Since it's been repaved and down to one lane in both directions, the traffic is horrendous, starting at 3:00 in the afternoon until past 6:00 in the evening. It is a half a mile backup from 10 Mile to Lincoln. And not only that, now we have cars who don't want to sit in this backup coming down our side street. We have, the traffic is horrendous on our side street on Campbell. I don't know what to do. I'm asking for your help. What do we do? Another thing, the manhole covers, a lot of them are still sitting low, so you've got that bump. I don't know whether there was a traffic study that was done before you decided to do it down to one lane, but there is a lot of traffic coming off of 696 that goes north on Campbell. It's a lot of traffic, and I know a lot of it might have to do with 75 now. I'm not sure, but I just wanted to let you know, it's horrible. It's really, really horrible. And not only in the evening, but even in the morning. It's bumper to bumper, and I don't know what to do about all those cars coming down our side street now. And they're all coming through, and what they're doing is they're cutting, they're going on a lean, going north, and going past an elementary school. Because I'm sure they're either all going to Lincoln or they're all going up to Fourth Street. So, there's an elementary school now that's being burdened with all this extra traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. Yes, sir.
Hello. My name is Doug Goins, and I live on 2227 North Campbell. And with what the person had said right behind me, I have to agree with them. I live on the street. Takes me 10 minutes in the morning to get out of my driveway. I don't understand the priority of reducing that street to one lane for one mile, and then you have I-75, which was scheduled to be this 20-mile corridor expansion. Stevenson Highway is closed from 12 to 14 mile or reduced. And I don't know if any of you actually drive on the service drive from 10 and 1/2 mile to 12 Mile, which is a city-owned street, responsibility of the city of Royal Oak, according to the Oakland County Road Commission for Oakland County. This puts all of the traffic constraints on Campbell and other north-south streets because not only have you reduced the north-south on Campbell between 10 and 11 Mile, you've reduced the number of lanes on Main Street, and now Stevenson is closed. And this is not projects that just came up last week. Where was the traffic study to show where the effect of the other road closures that have been in the process for years? And now you decide to reduce all of this north-south traffic, and the residents that live on the side streets, quiet side streets, it's like a raceway now. It's ridiculous. I just don't understand the priority of putting in traffic islands to reduce the traffic flow, putting in bike lanes. I live on Campbell. Nobody rides their bikes up and down Campbell, not in comparison to the amount of traffic that flies up and down that street every day. The other issue that I have is, I'm trying to figure out whose idea it was to change the light cycle of 12 Mile and Campbell so that when you approach the intersection, they put the traffic sensors in but never hooked them up. So, now, when I'm going south on 12 Mile, I wait through six light cycles before I can turn left because only three cars get through, but there's 35 cars. It's backed up past Hollywood every day now because of this added traffic. I think somebody somewhere needed to step back, and before they put new traffic constraints and slow everybody down, I think that they need to have enough throughways to make sure that the residents can get to and from where they're going safely and they're not affecting the traffic on the side streets. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goins. Yes, sir, in the back in the blue.
Hi, my name's Kevin Hester. I'm at 233 East Farnham, which is a 102-year-old house on the corner. It's our third house in Royal Oak, and it's the 11th house that we've owned overall. I'm here to talk in opposition to item 14 on the agenda. The concern that I have is I think it's an extra burden that you're placing on homeowners. I lived in Detroit, and they had one of these requirements. They also have one up in Flint. I don't know where else they have them in the state of Michigan. Neither one of those cities does very well. To me, it's basically just a solution looking for a problem. I don't think we have a problem. When we buy and sell property, there's an easy way to get an inspector, that you can get your own personal inspector and get the house inspected. So, I lived in Detroit. That was the first house that I bought as a homeowner. I never saw any results of an inspection when I moved in. I don't know if that was a requirement or not. I know the inspection was a requirement. When I sold it, a couple of years later, I had to get an inspection, scheduled it. The guy didn't show up, took the afternoon off. Nobody showed up, had to reschedule again. Guy finally showed up, wandered all around the house. Now, we'd already, with the buyer, had our personal inspection. I walked him through the house. We looked at everything. We agreed on everything. Guy looked all around, finally found an outlet in the ceiling of the basement that he wanted me to replace the cover on, had a scratch on it and had a little bit of rust on it. So, I did that. Then they had to get it re-inspected, and again, took two more schedules to have somebody show up to reaffirm that I'd done it. You know, so it was pretty much a useless process. So, every other house that I've bought or sold that I've bought, you know, I've decided whether I needed an inspector or not. If I needed an inspector, I hired an inspector. I looked at the inspector, at what their ratings were, at what their competency is, walked through with the inspector myself, get a good understanding of the house. The particular house we bought now is 102 years old. It's a wood frame house. We got an inspector that has a 100-year-old wood frame house himself and picked his brain on several things. It was very, very helpful, found several items. In cases where either I myself do an inspection or I hire an inspector to do an inspection, we find, you know, severe, significant issues, we renegotiate with the buyer or seller. I don't see any reason to get a government additional inspection involved in this. It's just going to, I think, muck up the works. So, in any case, I would encourage you to vote no on item 14. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heston. See a hand in the way back?
Jennifer Zardis, 2811 Bamslett. I am here on the same article, Article 14, about three. Okay, so there are numerous reasons why I do not feel that this is a good ordinance. I am in the real estate community. I have briefly gone over it. I have also talked to Jason on this for a bit today, and I do see some of the reasoning or why this was proposed, and the way it was explained to me is there's a lot of flipping going on in Royal Oak. There's a lot of homeowner, you know, people purchasing properties. They go in, they fix up the property, they make so many changes to that property, and they basically do not pull the right permits when they go back, sell the property, you know, then the buyers may be left. Okay, the permits weren't basically paid for, but the house is still basically sound in the buyer's eyes. So, this is the buyer purchasing the property. They have had their inspection. I do hear what other people are saying here. I don't feel that the city is going to come in and do an inspection of the property. I feel that they are going to come in, look and see if the proper permits were pulled, and if they weren't, cite whoever needs to be cited to get this income that was not basically followed at the time of the sale. I do understand that. However, putting it as part of the sale process is really going to mess up the wholesale process. We have roughly three weeks from the time a property comes under contract, inspection is done, closing is happening. With all of this activity going on in the Royal Oak market, manning, staffing, making this come to be, and if it's just a check box, that means that it's not really an inspection. It's just, do you have your money paid? And are these things, you know, if you, you know, put a furnace in in 2014, you're selling your house in 2017, all right, whoever put that furnace in didn't pull the permit. All right, so you go back and collect the money for the permit. Okay, so if the permit is, what, $100 for the permit, well, you probably just spent thousands of dollars of man-hours to collect that $100 for that permit. And how many houses is it really going to apply to? I understand that there are certain things that need to be followed, but I think reevaluating how this ordinance is laid out and really realizing the timeline of how this is going to disrupt the wholesale process. And what I would never want to happen is people not to want to buy their house and live in Royal Oak any longer because a lot of people want to live here. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Debbie Campbell, East University. I'm here tonight to urge you to vote no on Agenda Item Number 14, the reoccupancy ordinance. Knowing that home inspection contingency is standard in purchase agreements, why should the city insert itself into the sale of my home for no other reason than to collect additional fees and taxes under the guise of health and safety? I talked to three different licensed realtors over the weekend, and jaws literally dropped, all of them saying this will kill home sales in Royal Oak due to the colossal hassle with delays in city inspections, permitting costs and delays, contractor delays, reinspection delays, et cetera. Realtors jaws super dropped when they heard that all home sales, transfers, or other transactions without a certificate of occupancy would be unlawful, not only for homeowners, any salespeople, realtors, brokers, title companies, and mortgage lenders would also be breaking the law and subject to fine and jail time. The ordinance said the city will not require the home to be brought up to current codes, but it will not be legal to sell your home, and your home will be on record with the city as not having a certificate of occupancy. This will make it impossible for vintage homeowners who can't afford to make the upgrades needed to get the city's certificate of occupancy to sell their home and move. With this devaluation of our vintage homes and extensive protracted hassle, older homeowners may be forced to accept low-ball offers from developers seeking cheap teardowns. And in conclusion, is this the point of this ordinance? To legislate a steady stream of cheap teardowns for developers so they can replace them with half-million-dollar homes and increase the tax base to cover the majority on the city commission's out-of-control spending and debt? We are paying close attention to how you vote on this proposed ordinance. Vote no on Agenda 14.
All right, who's next? Sir in the front.
Hi, I'm William McGuire, 4456 Arlington, Royal Oak. About to become the most unpopular person here. The reality is, these homes are unsafe. I'm an electrical contractor. I go on these homes every day, and they're completely, a lot of them are unsafe. Because what happens is, you go to sell the home, home inspector comes out and says, "These things are wrong." He misses about half the stuff. And then, the buyer tries to negotiate the price back out. Okay, so, well, what happens in the end of the thing is, nothing happens, but they negotiate the prices back and forth, and the stuff never gets done. So, it just stays as it is, year after year, and it's dangerous. Half the homes in Royal Oak have multiple violations on them. I don't get involved personally because... I don't get involved personally because I don't need to be aggravated going through homes where they're never going to do anything. So if you don't mind houses being unsafe, keep it the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGuire. Mr. Wolf.
Ron Wolf, 333 North Troy Street. This is just a simply, simple money grab, targeting seniors who are looking to retire and sell their homes, last chance to get their last, kind of like a death tax, you know, that the city can benefit from, take their last few dollars, as much, as many of their last few dollars as it can. Mr. McGuire is right, there are so many homes that have multiple violations. Most of them are rentals. Yet, when a renter, two of them I knew personally, complained to the city, the city says, "We can't do anything. That's not our department. It's not being sold, only when it's sold," or, you know, "We don't do anything." Consequently, one lady I knew whose child had autism had to live in a moldy, water-damaged home for years until she finally gave up and moved to Madison Heights. Another lady lived in an upstairs where there was, there was only one outlet for the entire upstairs, and she had extension cords all over the place. Thus, that's, those are the people. Now, we all love our pets, and we all are concerned about abuse of our animals. But how many can spare a smile or a simple hello for an elderly senior, offer help for opening a door, carrying a package? Many seniors with chronic health conditions suffer silently. Any stress, even this, especially stresses like this preposterous number 14, which in reality is another last-chance money grab, exacerbates their suffering, causing depression, a major problem with seniors. It robs them of funds needed for moving, and yes, shortens their lives. "Seniors deserve no special treatment" is the new mantra with this increasingly, I'm sorry to borrow a previous expression, Gestapo-like treatment of our city's most vulnerable, our seniors. Equality, where's the equality for the handicapped and the elderly? No handicapped parking downtowns on surface streets. Seniors at Royal Oak Manor had their park, had parking meters installed around their building, lost parking. Were promised they'd only have to pay $25 a month, but then, because they deserve no special treatment, have to pay $45 a month. Animal welfare is important for our pets, who are members of our family, but so is the welfare of seniors trying to hold on to their last vestiges of independence. Seniors who have paid their dues and deserve a hand up, not another slap down. Come on now. Stop looking at it for the money. All you care about is the damn money. And everyone knows it. And that's why I hope most of you are going to be voted out of office. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. All right, who's next? Yes, ma'am, in pink.
My name is Karen Perslow. I live at 2515 Benjamin Avenue. I'm here to just make a brief statement on a few different items. First of all, the reoccupancy ordinance is a terrible idea for many reasons that have been talked about here. I'm totally opposed to it for many of the same reasons. I wanted to speak on the puppy mills. I'm in favor of a ban. I also think that in tandem with that might be a good idea to enact an ordinance limiting the number of pets you can have in your home. In some homes, it gets a bit out of control, and something maybe should be taken care of. Next, if Mr. Johnson needs somebody to proofread his letters, my daughters and I would be happy to help you out at a small fee, or maybe Mr. Chief Corrigan, Donnie Hughes', secretary could do it. There were several errors in there. Next, my son Brian was, unfortunately couldn't make it here tonight. He wanted to make his own statement, but he felt it was more important to be at his daughter's concert and be an involved father. And last but not least, I'm looking forward to taking part in the police run on June 1st. Thank you.
Ms. Perslow? All right, yes, sir, in the far back.
I live at 1018 East 12 Mile Road in Royal Oak. I've been in Royal Oak since maybe 1963 as a child, and I've enjoyed a big part of the time I've spent here. Before I begin, though, I'd like to say something to Mr. Dubach.
Sir, you have to actually address the Commissioner.
Okay, so I'll address the Commissioner, and I'd like to thank his, thank him for his service in the Peace Corps. I know several folks who knew Sergeant Shriver and appreciated the effort that they made in the Peace Corps and the effort that he made in all those who followed him. So you may not be recognized so often for that service. So many others are recognized, but I'll thank you for that, and I appreciate your service. You know, I object to this thing on item 14. I would ask you all what's wrong with you, but I've got a parking meter running, and I just don't have enough time to listen to, you know, everything you know that's wrong with yourselves. Why do you want to push this on the people of Royal Oak? We've managed for, what, 100 years without it? Sure, there's house after house that could be improved, could have this and that done, but those issues will work themselves out in a free market. There'll be buyers who come along who decide that this is worth the investment, and they'll improve it. You see it with these houses getting knocked down all the time. This matter resolves itself. It doesn't need your help. You all don't need to get involved with it. It isn't a matter of health and safety. I haven't, you know, I haven't heard a fire engine sound off and head out to the last fire for the last electrical issue in somebody's house. It's just not an issue. It's just not happening. And your track record leaves, you know, a lot to be desired. You all have failed with this busing issue. You failed with the sidewalks. You're just not credible. You shouldn't push this on the people of Royal Oak. It's just not what you're good at. I don't know what you all are good at as a collective body, but in November, the people are going to speak, and they're going to have a lot to say about what's their desire, and I'm sure it isn't this. You have almost no one supporting the idea, and it's a bad idea. I don't want you on my property. I've actually put up, posted no press passing signs, and that's to keep you people out, okay? But I invite anybody in Royal Oak who would like to come see me, who isn't part of the Royal Oak government, to do that. You can come over and visit with me. I'll be more than happy to open the door and welcome you in. So if you would, please, table this idea. It's a bad idea. Do something right for a change, and do that for the people of Royal Oak. Thank you.
Alsop? High five. Very nice. Who is next? Right here on the end. Yes, ma'am. Yep. Actually, okay, and then you can go after.
Name's William. Name's William Drosky. I live at 1520 Ferris, Royal Oak, Michigan. Something like, asked a question on, that, it's like on the Facebook groups or somewhere, asked a question that, does this, would probably invite lawsuit to the Central City? Probably so. But I think with item 14, I think it's a really bad idea. It's probably a bad, gonna be a bad can of worms. That's all I had to say to it.
Thank you, Mr. Drosky. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Jane Kosis. I live on North Blair by Montrose Park, and I am a real estate agent as well. I do not support number 14 for the many reasons that were cited here. Number one, a buyer always has his own home inspection. He pays for that, and he pays good money. And the home inspectors, you might say, they're no good because they're not certified. That's how they make their living, and if they don't do a good job, they don't get referral business. Most of them are very, very good, and they do a great job for buyers. We don't need the city government involved in inspections. It's going to cause a lot of delays, create chaos, and I won't go through the many other reasons that people enumerated tonight. Please do not enact number 14. And if you want something to be, for your inspectors to be occupied with, how about doing something about the trash situation behind a lot of the restaurants? This is a picture, a recent picture of one of the restaurants on 11 Mile. If you wonder why we have a rat problem, there you go. So if you want something to do, here's something that you could take care of. This is a recent picture, and I'd be happy to pass you out copies. I made copies.
Did you get a copy to code enforcement as well?
I have copies here.
Did you submit it? Because it's helpful if they get a copy of it.
I did not. I just got it today, so I'm sorry I did not, but I'm happy to share them with you.
Okay, yeah, please do. Please send it to Ms. Hallis, and we'll make sure it gets to code enforcement.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I shared that with code enforcement today.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner O'Leary.
Thank you so much. And last, all my comments are negative. They're not. I want to commend you for considering number 16. I'm a huge animal lover, and this is so needed. Please pass number 16. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kosis. All right, who's next? I see a hand right here. Gentleman behind Mr. Clark, and then we'll go with Mr. Clark. Yes, sir. No. Just the lighting's so bad, I gotta... Mr. Campbell, right? Mr. Campbell, yeah. Sorry, Clark Campbell. I called you Mr. Clark. I'm losing some blood here on my leg. I'm sorry.
I hope I didn't jump in front of anybody.
No, you're all right.
My name's Bill Adams. I live at 1424 Vincenta. I'm here regarding number 14. Just a few bullet points. I think most of them have been brought up, but A, number one, I feel this to be intrusive. You know, I've heard about people speaking about the city of Detroit. They passed an ordinance in 1976, which required city inspections. I've seen Dearborn have a very intrusive inspection, and both of those cities, in my opinion anyway, it led to the city heading in a negative direction more than a positive. We live in a very nice community here, and I do not see that this is going to make it any better. I'm unaware of any other Oakland County cities that require inspections of occupied properties. Buyers are encouraged, I'm also a real estate broker myself. Buyers are encouraged to complete inspections. They have a due diligence period, and typically, contrary to some of the other earlier comments, I believe that most of the inspectors that do inspections do a very competent job. I've had very few people come back to me and blame an inspector on a problem that happened after they purchased a house. The one thing, I spent 32 minutes on the phone with the city today, and they talked about the house flippers. One of my questions for the city that I didn't ask is, what percentage of complaints does the city get for the number of homes that are actually sold? There's always going to be a few people that are not satisfied, but I think it's somewhat of an atypical situation. Ultimately, this is going to be a cost to homeowners. And speaking with the city today, they said the cost would be $50 for an inspection. At a minimum, based on the statistics that were quoted earlier today, you would need at least one more employee. And getting an employee and multiplying 50 times the number of transactions, assuming that everybody paid for this required inspection, would probably not be able to cover the cost. So that cost would ultimately be worth, excuse me, would ultimately run the homeowners a lot more than $50 for this 10-minute inspection. The other thing the building department said, I asked them, I said, "What if you find an issue?" And they said, "Well, ultimately, we want to go back to the person that did install the furnace and didn't pull the permit." So I said, "Well, what if that person's no longer around?" Well, the reality is that that cost falls back on the homeowner. They want the homeowner to pull a permit. I don't believe, I'm not sure about electrical, but I know homeowners really can't pull HVAC permits, so I don't know where the homeowner is going to step up, get the HVAC permit, and clear all the outstanding violations. If you go to a contractor who hasn't done the work and ask them to pull that permit, that's like pulling about five teeth. In closing, I'm against item 14. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Thank you, sir. Yep, you had your hand up? You still want to speak? Yeah.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. My name's Greg Barnas, and I'm at 30574 Woodward. I'm in real estate. I manage a real estate office in Royal Oak, and I have about 30 agents that I oversee. I've been selling residential real estate in Royal Oak myself for a little over 22 years now, and I am here in strong opposition of item number 14, and I just think it's, I think it's an unfortunate waste of everybody's time and energy to be giving this so much time and energy, because I do not think that it's a valid idea for the city of Royal Oak. I don't think it would benefit anyone. In the communities in which I've sold, where there are city certs, it's nothing but problems and headaches. Things that are brought up or revealed are usually things that everybody involved in the transaction is already aware of, and they've already worked towards a remedy. So, you know, we talk about properties not being safe, or we've heard some of that, but I don't see that. You know, majority of homes in Royal Oak are well-maintained and, you know, are guided by, you know, agents and brokers that help them make good decisions, you know, in buying and selling. And I just don't think that the city has a role in playing in that. And again, we would be the only community in all of Oakland County to impose such a stipulation, which to me just does not make sense. So I hope that you'll strongly, you know, vote this down and not give it any more air time, because I just don't think it's necessary at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Ms. Campbell.
I don't have a hat hair problem, because I don't have any hair. Mayor and Commissioners, I'm actually going to change it up a little. I'd like to talk about Agenda Item 12, which is the trade contract awards at the new police department. I sent you all an email late last night that listed a lot of questions I had. I'm just going to briefly go over that for the benefit of my fellow citizens, but I'm hoping that you'll discuss this when you get to your Agenda Item 12. And basically, the total of the awards came in at about, at approximately $1.1 million over budget for the police station, and I see that Mr. Todd Fenton has submitted a memo to the Commission restating four budget reduction recommendations from Mr. Chris Becker of Plan Moran. As a concerned citizen and taxpayer, I have the following comments regarding these recommendations that I'd like you all to discuss at the table. Basically, number one, something called value engineering, and it's for a quarter of a million-dollar reduction. I'm not clear what value engineering is, and specifically, Mr. Becker has the term capitalized in his memo, and Mr. Fenton, however, does not capitalize the term in his memo. So I'm not really clear what that is and how it would save us a quarter of a million dollars. Omnia, I believe that's how it's pronounced, Partners, is a half-a-million-dollar reduction in cost, and according to Mr. Becker of Plan Moran, the city of Royal Oak has, quote, "utilized this process to purchase approximately $1.5 million of equipment and services in this fashion in the past." So my question is, is this my mic that's bouncing here? Okay. Why does the current budget include an additional half-a-million dollars for furniture, fixtures, and equipment if the Omnia program with this amount of cost savings is already available to us? Number three was that the DDA has pledged funds of a quarter of a million dollars to the project, and we would apply that to this particular project to bring it back into budget. My question is, this is not really lowering the cost of the project. This is really just taking money from one city of Royal Oak account and moving it to And I also curious how much additional funding would remain available from the DDA after this application of funds. And the fourth is a transfer of $160,000 from the connectivity project contingency fund. Why are contingency funds from one city project being transferred to another city project when it already has a contingency fund? And I don't even know what the, I'm sorry, but I'm not aware of what the connectivity project is and why it could afford to give up $160,000. project is and why it could afford to give up $160,000. Finally, after all the work involved in the proposed adjustment of costs and the dips into the other city funds to bring the project back under budget, why does the third section of the recommended resolution authorize our city staff to execute change orders on this project as they see fit, so long as they do not exceed the contingency amount of $408,000? Why would we give our city staff access to a blank check totaling $408,000? Thank you. And again, on behalf of myself and my fellow Royal Oak citizens, I thank you for your service and your attention to this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Who's next? In the very back, I see a hand up.
Good evening. Kathy Arnold, 4509 Hampton. Thankfully to the many realtors here tonight, I've cut my notes in half, let them say what they say best. What hasn't been mentioned here tonight is, it wasn't that long ago, and it was a pretty long discussion, as I recall, watching from home, the chief building official was here telling about the staffing shortages, understaffed, overworked, can't get to everything. Now all of a sudden, we have time to go all around town and inspect the hundreds of homes that are pending, excuse me, pending sales. What is this going to cost? How many people? You and I both know there is no 10- to 20-minute inspection in and out that's not capable amongst this city department. This is going to require staffing, bloated payroll costs, delayed home sales, possibly lost home sales while people are waiting. It's not the guise of health, welfare, and safety. It's an insult to our intelligence to say that. It's a thinly veiled attempt to exert control and a shameless money grab. So if you really want something to discuss, how about a proposed ordinance to prevent city staff from wasting time and taxpayer dollars on ordinance proposals that are costly and can't reasonably be enforced? How about requiring a cost proposal before something even gets to this point that brought how many people out tonight? And how many have already publicly stated on Facebook and in other avenues that this probably isn't going to pass? But we all had to waste our time to come here and speak. You had to waste your time to sit and listen to us all night long. My frustration is probably wrongly directed at you. It's city management and staff that should never let this stuff get this far to waste all of our time. You guys rightly saw through the snow removal, proposed ordinance. We wasted a lot of time and hours watching. I think you're reasonable enough to see through this again tonight, but let's stop this from coming back again and again and again. Let's put some thought into these things before even the city attorney has to spend the time to make it a legal proposed ordinance. There's got to be other ways to get these discussions stopped and let reasonable heads prevail before this stuff gets here and wastes all of our time. So thank you, and I trust that you guys will put an end to this tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Arnold. Who's next? Yes, ma'am. In the pink, yes, ma'am. I'll get you next, sir.
Good evening. Suzanne Chambers. Firstly, I find that this is insulting and outrageous. What I, what thought into my, came into my head immediately was, even if you aren't selling your home, this could become a, just a practice where they come, all of a sudden, you have your yearly inspection in your home. I mean, I've never heard of anything like, this really sounds like occupied Russia or something. So I don't know who, what I'd like to really understand is, who, why, when did this idea even come up? And by who? And for what reason? We've been here 100-plus years. What in the world? Why all of a sudden do we have to have, go looking in for possible code violations in 50-year-old homes and older, and the homeowner? And then to say, and this cost is going to be put onto the homeowner? It's absolutely frightening to me. It's been said many times, an overreach. And to report all code violations, it's really insulting. I find it completely insulting. I do think that the other, there's been so much said that I don't really, there's nothing more I have to say, but I would like to have somebody come out from the inspection department, all this inspection, new love affair, come out and look at Campbell. It really, someone is going to be killed there. They have these ridiculous buffers, like a little concrete thing that sticks out for no, I understand the concept, but we didn't need that. We could have kept it at the two lanes either way. It was fine. The neighborhood wasn't being overrun with cars that are frustrated and children at the school, at Oakland Elementary. So I find this, this whole issue that we're speaking about tonight insulting, frightening, unnecessary. I'd like to know whose idea it was, but please send one of the inspectors that isn't going to be coming in to our homes to look at Campbell. It's really, really important. Someone is going to be hurt on one of those, whatever those little diverters are, to take people wherever they're going to go, I don't know. It's a very poor design at Campbell. Very, very dangerous, very poor. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Chambers. Yes, sir, here. You got the awkward seat where that podium kind of covers you.
Mayor Fortner, city commissioners. My name is Albert Nesbit. I live at 3616 Yorba Linda in Royal Oak. My remarks tonight are solely to address the proposed reoccupancy ordinance. I have been a Royal Oak resident for 41 years. I'm a retired Navy veteran who served our country over 40 years. During my service, I made an oath to support and defend the Constitution of the United States. It is my belief that this proposed ordinance is a slap in the face to the Fourth Amendment to that Constitution. Inspecting residential property is a waste of taxpayer dollars. It does not promote health and safety and welfare of the general public. The cost to the taxpayers of this proposed ordinance is not justified by its perceived Thomas Batrim Lacy, Director of the Office of Management and Budget in Jimmy Carter's 1977 administration, was quoted in the newsletter of the U.S. Chamber of Commerce, Nation's Business, May 1977. Lance believes he can save Uncle Sam billions if he can get the government to adopt a simple motto. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. He explains the trouble with government is fixing things that aren't broken and not fixing things that are broken. I believe this proposal meets that criteria. I believe that Mr. Craig just wants reasons to increase the staff of the building department. Royal Oak has been a great place to live. I've enjoyed, I've raised two children here. Property values have been maintained. This type of requirement will only hurt our community. It is just a bad idea on multiple levels, and I'm not a real estate agent, I'm just a homeowner. It is my recommendation as a taxpayer, property owner, and voter that you not adopt this ordinance. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Nesbit. Ms. Wagner.
Before I get to item 14, there's, I have a few other things I want to discuss. First of all, the parking at Farmer's Market, the handicap parking, the paint is almost all gone. There's no permanent fixed, no permanent signage there for handicap, and it's mounted on sawhorses, which regularly get folded up and put away. I've been there on two occasions recently where they were missing entirely, the food truck rally and Saturday at Farmer's Market. So people parked in them, not handicap people. It needs to be fixed, and it need to be fixed permanently until the police station is done. Second of all, the CBDG funds approved last week included $200,000, or almost 25% reduction in the city's home rehabilitation program. As Commissioner Perush pointed out, a good portion of those funds are used by seniors. $350,000 are almost 40% reduction in the parks fund, but $600,000 was dedicated to repaving and a, what do we call it? An infrastructure, green infrastructure program on Judson Avenue. I don't think that's the place for CBDG funds. They should stay with the parks and the rehab program. Claims. Tonight, we're paying six, we're approving the payment of $6,000 for six months of parking in the North Main Parking LLC, which I believe is the one by Imagine, instead of using the hundreds of parking spaces we have available in our own structures. I don't understand that. That's using taxpayer monies to pay another entity to park. The budget meeting. Since I don't plan on attending, I hope to see the tax revenue from completed homes on the Robertson Brothers subdivision dedicated to Normandy Oaks, since the park will be open during the coming fiscal year, and that was a promise made at the time. Finally, Agenda Item 14. I watched, I was here and I re-watched the meeting where Mr. Craig talked about how the staffing problems. He couldn't make accommodations for a wheelchair person. The prediction was it was going to be two to four weeks before they could even review the plans. Not enough people, people take vacations, people get sick. He doesn't know when people are going to come. So to put in a certificate of occupancy requirement and say you're going to do it in a short period of time, obviously is not going to be the case. In fact, I have little confidence that that will be the case. And on a personal note, I'm living in the house that I grew up in. My parents built it. I moved into it when my mother died. I didn't have a certificate of occupancy. I would not have wanted to deal with her death, handling her estate, and then having to get a certificate of occupancy just so I could move back into my childhood home. And any improvements that might have, or any code improvements that might have to be met just to move back into my childhood home. I don't think that's right. And I plan on moving out feet first, and I don't want to put that burden on my daughter. So please, I urge you to vote no.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner. Mr. Esprit.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Clyde Esprit, 4135 South Fulton Place. I'm here to talk about bike lanes and increased traffic. First of all, I want to thank you for putting the bike lanes in. As a person who lives over by Normandy and Greenfield, being able to take Normandy to Maine to Euclid to Washington to Fourth East to Campbell South has created a viable way through Royal Oak where you can safely encompass from the northwest to the southeast portion of the city in a way that frankly before was not nearly as safe as it is today. I know I hear a lot of people say that they never see cyclists on these roads. The reality is, I ride a bike that's dead silent. All these people who say they never see cyclists have probably never seen me, and I've ridden in front of their homes countless times. I've been up and down Campbell more times than I can count. I understand the frustration with the traffic that's taking place on Campbell, but just, you know, anecdotally speaking, as a person who lives right off of Greenfield and, you know, using Wayes Finding a Driving software like everybody does on their smartphones these days, as recently as six months ago, making a left turn on the Greenfield from my area at 7:30 in the morning was a 30-second to a 60-second endeavor. Today, it can be five and 10 minutes, because the reality is people are avoiding the entire corridor, and so many people have switched from Woodward to 14 to Greenfield South. Again, speaking anecdotally, the violence of the traffic accidents that I've seen on Greenfield has increased only because people don't realize that from Greenfield from 14 to 13, because it's completely residential and tagged at 40 miles an hour, people are screaming through there at 50 and 55. People coming across Normandy don't realize that they're actually coming into a major street. And again, I don't have numbers, I'm speaking anecdotally, but the frequency and the violence of the crashes taking place in that area have definitely gone up. But again, this is all because of I-75. I was actually looking on social media the other day, and the Claussen Police Department has actually created a Facebook page. If you're not following, follow it. It's actually very informative and very interesting. But they have also put a task force in place in Claussen specifically to deal with the cut-through traffic that they have to deal with as a result of the I-75 closure. So to my friends on the southeast side, we are feeling it on the northwest side, Claussen's feeling it. I mean, we are all being victimized by this I-75 deal. But again, I want to thank you for putting in those bike lanes. I'm using them frequently. My friends are using them frequently. You've made life safer for us, and for that, I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Esprit. Anybody else wish to speak here tonight at public comment?
One.
Going twice. All right, public comments closed. We're going to bring the discussion back to this side of the table, which brings us to item number eight, which is the approval of the agenda. Commissioner Perush.
I'll move approval of the agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Perush. We had a second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion on the approval of the agenda. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, that brings us to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off the consent agenda? Commissioner Dubac.
Yeah, Mayor, just for discussion, I'd like to pull item M. I.
M. I. Okay, anybody else? All right, that leaves us, consent agenda, which consists of the claims from May 21st, 2019, approval of purchase orders, approval of Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority renewal, approval of workers' compensation excess coverage renewal, approval of purchase agreement for installation of security access control system, approval of Engineering Division fee schedule for 2019 to 2020, order of contract S-1901 2019 sewer televising and root treatment, order of professional engineering services, Lawson and Franklin Park surveying, approval of restrictive covenant for environmental cleanup at the Department of Public Services yard site, approval to renew agreement for management of workers' compensation claims, York Risk Services Group designation of nonprofit status, Michigan World War II Memorial Legacy, and designation of nonprofit status for the Royal Oak Schools Foundation, as well as receive and file non-action items, April 2019 Southeastern Oakland County Resource Recovery Authority Quarterly Report, and item M. 3, which is the April 2019 Southeastern Oakland County Water Authority Quarterly Report. Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Dubac. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Gibbs. Discussion on the remaining consent agenda. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Commissioner Dubac, M. I. is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Real quickly, I know we're already kind of running into the evening here, but I did want to recognize this item, which is the city, through the efforts of Ms. Julie Lyons-Brecker, who is our grants coordinator and energy sustainability manager. She's a security grant from the United States Green Building Council, which other cities like Las Vegas, Baltimore, Bloomington, Indiana have, are also in the same cohort, and it's designed to help us start making real progress and steps and set some goals with regard to lead certification, renewable energy, and really gets us up and running with regard to having a citywide sustainability plan. I just thought it was worth noting, especially in light of some of the direct questioning, you know, with regard to staff's integrity and ability. Our staff are constantly working to deliver for the people of the city, bring forward ideas that they think might solve problems. Don't always hit the mark. In this case, though, this is exactly what we've been asking for. City local governments are the, really the last line of defense for sound environmental policy, given lack of action at the federal and state level. So this is a great step in that direction where we can start, make sure we're putting more water back in the ground, reducing our carbon footprint, planting more trees, and encouraging, you know, residents to take part in that. So I wanted to recognize her efforts. With that, I'll move to accept the, it's not an act.
Received and filed.
Do I need, move to receive and file?
Motion by Commissioner Dubac. Second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion. All right, I'll just say aye, concur. With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Documents received and filed. This brings us to item number 10, which is a public hearing on Dutch elm disease trees removal.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. It's the annual public hearing for Dutch elm disease tree removal.
This year, there are nine trees on the list. I believe two of them have already been removed or are pending reinspection. In accordance with the ordinance, it's the one tree we can condemn for removal, and as part of the ordinance, the public hearing is... And as part of the ordinance, the public hearing is desired to be, or required to be held before you pass the resolution approving their removal.
Questions for Mr. Rassell, Commissioner Macy.
Did you say nine trees?
It's nine addresses on the roster.
I was calculating $3,000 a tree, but I said you're talking per address.
The attachment, I believe, has nine trees listed.
Nine addresses.
Nine addresses, yes. Nine addresses.
More than one tree on some.
Some have more than one tree.
And do the homeowners bear the entire burden of the cost?
Yes, they do.
Commissioner Dubac. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Rassell, the last few times that we've brought forward.
Are on the replacement tree list.
They're on the replacement tree list. City's going to pay to replace those trees, correct? As we just.
Yes.
Awesome, thank you. Mr. Rassell, also, as we discussed before, the payment plan is afforded.
They have to contact the assessor on how to set that up.
Okay.
Or treasury, excuse me.
Mr. Perush.
Mr. Rassell, I went by some of these addresses and I didn't see the tree. So I guess that it's tucked back behind the house or in the, way in the back of the property. You know, the Dutch elm program has been going on so long, you would think that we would have gotten rid of all of the diseased trees by now. Is this something that is?
A lot of the trees now grow in fence lines. And are more as scrub trees than actual ornamental trees.
Okay.
But the ordinance is still on the books.
Oh, definitely, absolutely.
So there are still a number of ornamental trees and there is an elm tree that's now disease-resistant that's being introduced as an ornamental tree.
Okay. Because I don't think any of these are actual street trees.
No, they are not.
They're all.
And if they were street, and all of these are private property trees. If they were street trees, we would just take them down.
Just take them out.
Yes.
And I think all of those were gone a long time ago. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Macy.
So I just want to clarify, even though these are on private property, we're replacing them with trees at our own.
We're going to offer them a replacement tree.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Rassell? Okay. I'm going to open up the public hearing. Same rules apply as they do for public comment. Does anyone here wish to speak at the public hearing tonight for the Dutch elm disease trees? Mr. Campbell.
I read this with interest. I was curious, similar to the questions, I think, that Commissioner Macy was asking about who actually covers this. But I looked at the sheet and I thought, number one, where are these trees? Like Commissioner Perush was talking about. And I pulled up the one, there's a quote on here for a tree removal for the Plackmires. $9,000 it's going to cost them to get the tree taken out of their yard. And then a $60 service fee, whatever that is, I'm not sure. But the total price tag on this, on this attachment was $27,000. And I was just kind of floored when I'm, I was curious where these quotes came from. Is the city contract with someone? Is that how this works and we just go in? I'm just curious what the whole process is. If I was a homeowner and you told me I was going to have to pay $9,000 to get a tree out, I'd say, whoa, timeout. I'll find another way to do this. And I also noticed that it looks like the Plackmires actually live in Grozil and somebody else is in New Mexico. Everybody else looks like they actually live at the houses here. But most of these, well, I mean, there's a $5,400 quote, $3,600, $9,000, $3,600. Wow. Having had a tree removed at another, an ash issue I personally had, where they had to bring in a crane, it took, it cost me $2,000 to get a crane to lift a full-grown ash out of a backyard over the house. I don't know who's quoting you $9,000 to take this tree out, but it seems to me that you're getting the quotes from the wrong people. I did, by the way, when I got that $2,000 tree removal happened. This was a house down in Ferndale. I also had a quote for $10,000 from another company. So I was floored. I mean, when the guy told me, oh, I'll do it for two grand, I'm like, yeah, I think you got the job, not 10 grand. But anyway, so again, my question is, who, where do these contracts? Who is the vendor that's making this money? Because it's pretty good money.
Thank you, Mr. Rassell. Anybody else here to wish to speak on the Dutch elm disease? Mr. Wolf.
I'm just very curious. You have an inspector of trees. Our Christmas pine was allegedly diseased. So I thought it was taken down because you needed the space for the construction of the clinic, but I was told it was diseased. These, your inspector needs to be paid. So I'm wondering, could you tell me, please? Does the inspector, is there a charge? Does the inspector have a city charge for diagnosing the tree as needing removal? And I'd like to know how much that diagnosis is. And as Mr. Campbell said, that a normal tree, we need, needs removal is a lot cheaper. It seems this Dutch elm thing is outrageously more expensive. And it seems to me most of the money might be going towards paying the inspector's salary. Is that true? Please tell me. I'd like to know what's going on here. Why is it more money to remove a Dutch elm, I mean, an elm tree than it is to remove another tree? Are their roots deeper? Do, you know, is there a problem with possible contamination? And why don't you allow the homeowner to find someone else to remove the tree for, by their own, on their own, and have them do it instead? And because I'm a bit confused. Is the city removing the tree? Or is the homeowner given the choice of hiring someone else to remove the tree? If those questions are answered, I could live with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Anybody else here to speak at tonight's public hearing? All right, we're going to close the public hearing and bring the discussion back up here. Ms. Gibbs, I see your hand moving.
I have a question. If these trees are all on private property, how, like in the backyard, how, how does the city know that they are diseased?
Okay, let's go with the two-minute version of how this process works. In our, late August, we do an inspection of the entire city identifying Dutch elm trees. The homeowners notified to have the tree down by November 15. After November 15, we do another inspection and notify the homeowner again that we are going out the bid or our city contractor is providing estimates on the bid. After that time, the homeowner is notified of what the cost of the bids are and when this public hearing date is going to be held. And thus, that puts us where we're at now. The contractor who's taking it down is a city contractor who does the bids. The inspections are done by the city-certified arborist who identifies the trees. And that's how we comply with the ordinance.
Okay, but that doesn't really answer my question. Do you have the homeowner's permission to go into their backyard?
Since it's a condemnation, we have the authority to go into the backyard.
Okay.
Commissioner Levasseur.
Just to clarify, we identify these as Dutch elm? Have we identified them as diseased Dutch elm?
Yes.
Okay.
Dutch elm is a disease, not of a variety of tree.
Okay, all right, thank you. I'll follow up with a couple of the questions. What was the process of determining who is to do the removal of the tree? Was this a matter that was put out to bids, we accepted bids?
It is a contractor that we have hired that is, was selected to a bid process.
Okay. And the other is, I see that the clerk notified the property owners. Have we received any feedback from any of them in this regard?
No, we haven't.
Thank you.
Mr. Rassell, can you remind us what happens if we don't cut down diseased Dutch elm trees?
It just spreads and this list will be longer.
And we lose our tree-lined streets potentially and good healthy trees become diseased.
Well, we're going to lose the Dutch elm trees. There are some people who do treat their elm tree. We went through this situation where occasionally some people have a healthy tree and they treat an elm tree and try to keep it alive and spend a lot of money on injections and that kind of stuff. So it will affect that resident if we don't remove the elm trees.
Commissioner Dubac.
Yeah, just to clarify on that, so we are aggressive in this matter and have an ordinance governing this process so that we can protect our tree canopy.
The remaining elm trees, that's correct.
All right, which is clearly the will of the residents to protect our tree canopy. So it is a longstanding process that we've done for years to protect our existing trees so we're not tearing down dozens of trees.
Commissioner Perush.
The ordinance that is in place that has this program as its backbone, which allows the city to remove things which are a threat to public health and welfare, which is our job, has been in place, I believe, since either the late 60s or the early 70s. Back in the day when we would have these public hearings and this list of addresses with diseased trees on them, there would probably be 100 homeowners on this list with diseased trees, which gives you an indication of the volume of trees that were in the city at that time. Dutch elm disease trees were recognized as a national problem and a state problem in those states where they were prolific. And they were prolific a lot in the Detroit areas. Right after the war, when the housing development boom happened, they were planted a lot and then the disease came along. Just about every community in the state has an ordinance just like this to deal with Dutch elm disease trees. And it's, it's an unfortunate thing because you do lose part of the tree canopy, but it is a diseased tree. It is a threat to public health and it needs to go when it's been identified. And the ordinance gives the city staff, who are professionals in terms of identifying it, the authorization to enter onto private property when they suspect that there's one back there behind the garage and go back there and ensure that in fact it is a Dutch elm and then put it on the list. Because the city has considered this a way of dealing with those important issues of public health and welfare for almost 50 years. And this is, this year's iteration of it. I'm surprised in a way that there's only nine because it kind of ebbs and flows. Last year, there were only a couple on the list. This year, there's more, which means that some of those seedlings are popping back up and they're getting to the point where they're, where they're becoming diseased. So the other question I have is the $9,000. Is that one tree in a, in a.
I believe it's one tree and it's quite large. And I believe there are power lines in a backyard involved.
Ah, that'll do it. Yep. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Gillum, you had something to comment?
Commissioner Perush kind of beat me to the punch here, but I did have the ordinance open on my computer screen. And actually, we've had an ordinance in place regarding the protection of elm trees since 1955.
55.
And specifically, there's been a provision in here for the inspection of private property and the removal of diseased trees since 1968. And my recollection is that there used to be a state statute that was similar.
Yes.
But I believe that's been repealed now because of the fact that so many communities have their own ordinance, number one. And number two, we have made some progress in terms of eradication of Dutch elm. And I think the consensus in Lansing was that there wasn't the need for a statewide ordinance anymore. But this is still common practice in communities throughout southeastern Oakland, Michigan, as you indicated.
Commissioner Dubac.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Rassell gave the two-minute update review real quick, but just to make sure that we emphasize that point, the homeowner has multiple opportunities to hire their own contractor.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And they're absolutely free to hire their own contractor if they don't want to use the city's contractor.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I'll move for the resolution.
Motion by Commissioner Dubac, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, this brings us to item number 11, the Royal Oak Civic Center project budget presentation.
Mr. Mayor, could we take five?
Yeah, we can adjourn for five, 10 minutes for a break. Good suggestion, Commissioner Levasseur. All right, we adjourn, we'll be back in likely 10 minutes, but I'll say five. All right, back to business. I think we are just ready to commence the Royal Oak Civic Center project budget presentation. Mr. Fenton.
Yes, there's actually two items on the agenda pertaining to the Civic Center project tonight. Before we get to the second award of police station trade contract work, which we're seeking your approval on, we thought it'd be prudent to provide a brief budget update of where the project is at today. So we have Greg Van Kurt from Plant Moran Cressa. He'll walk you through a brief presentation on how we are and we can move from there.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here before you tonight. Since I've given a holistic overview of the entire project. But tonight, we thought we're about 40% done. And as Todd mentioned, in a few moments after my presentation, you'll be given the ability to award one of the final major parts of the construction program. So all good news is an overview, we're roughly 40% done from where we started. So feeling good right now where we are in total. I have a little bit of an overview for all of you. I'm going to start with just a scope and schedule overview, just to give everyone a reminder. You know, Plant Moran Cressa, we were brought on sometime in early 2016. Worked quite a bit of time doing due diligence, vetting this program out. A term sheet was actually awarded or approved or provided for thought June 17. Development agreement signed August 17 and then a bond sale May 18. And, which really was, once the sale of the bonds were done, full notice to proceed. And we've proceeded accordingly. You have a quick outline or overview sketch of what the program is. We've just added a little bit more meat to the bone, so to speak, on the presentation. So before, it used to say Royal Oak Civic Center Office Building. Now it's the Henry Ford outpatient facility. The parking structure had 550 spaces. It's now defined, including the alleyway, et cetera, 598 spaces, so on and so forth. So we give a little bit of background on the police station, a little bit of background on the city hall. Obviously, the park will be the last domino to fall, but that 5 million has been squared away since the very beginning of when that term sheet was set aside. So that's kind of an overview of the big project. I know, once we start construction, you know, obviously the parking deck is going to open up next month. We're very excited. So that'll be one of the first dominos to fall. So I feel pretty good about high level. You kind of know what's going on. Just wanted to make sure before I move on and get into the individual budget items of each facility, there's no questions on the overview.
Questions on the overview? Seeing none?
I think there's a typo. City Hall, the start was supposed to be in fall of 2018. Actual was winter of 2019. Is that?
This is 18, you're right. Yeah, you are right. My apologies, I'll fix that. The plan is we'll put this on the website.
Got it.
So I appreciate that. Moving on, the parking deck budget. Overall, where do we stand? Right now, we are about $260,000 under budget in total. I direct everyone to the bottom right-hand corner where it says remaining contingency dollars not used. We're about $260,000. If you start in the upper left-hand corner, you'll see where the current budget was. Professional fees, the CM, the GMP, furniture fixture and equipment is what FFE stand for, plus miscellaneous, and then owner contingency. So there's the $18 million original budget. If you go across from left to right, you'll see what all the actual numbers were. Probably in the GMP, you'll see that that went over a little bit. That was 600 and some thousand dollars over. A large part of that was due to owner-defined changes and miscellaneous unknowns on allowances or unforeseeables. Unforeseeables is soil conditions, change orders, maybe some streetscaping, things that we did with the library and some other things that go into that. But overall, we feel really good that the structure should be open next month, right on kind of time when, when we thought, based on when the bond sale was specifically. And we're $260,000 under. Now there's some miscellaneous closeout. Now, there's some miscellaneous closeout, punch-out, and some tiny things, but overall, we should be under budget. Any questions on the parking deck?
Questions?
Well, when Greg says next month, we're going to talk in two weeks.
Okay. Moving on to the city hall, pretty much the same thing. Obviously, we're a little bit further in construction than maybe the police station, but we still have a long way to go. We would suspect that, you know, next year about this time, we'll be talking about it, just like we are the parking structure. Feeling fairly good. The budget, 12 and 2 million 50, roughly, was the original budget or current budget, and we have $362,000 still in contingency remaining. Any questions?
Questions for Mr. Van Kert?
Moving on. Parking, streetscape budget. Probably, we could almost even add one thing, which is called connectivity or underground stabilization. This is also the part where we do the storm, the water, sewer, all those types of things to connect all these facilities together. In total, we feel fairly good. The only thing that is not done, obviously, is the park. That has a... Sorry?
Need to update the slide. Next, still on city hall.
So this is the park, streetscape, and connectivity. The park has allocated $5 million, which has been untouched. That is waiting to the end or the completion of the project. That'll happen in roughly fall of '20 and be completed in spring, summer of '21, just simply because it's all outdoor construction. Overall, we feel very good. A large portion of the connectivity is complete, meaning all that underground work has been done. That is all under budget. The work has been complete, and it's a GMP, so we feel pretty good. So good and such that you'll see that we actually make a recommendation to move $160,000 to the police station budget. Now, this is probably a good time for a question. In terms of big picture, we have always viewed this as one holistic project. As your program manager, I want to make sure the police building's good. I want to make sure the city hall building is good. I want to make sure the park, the connectivity, and the parking structure is all pulled together and complete. But for individual component reasons, we always track individually because they're all moving at different times, and we want to be good stewards of the city's dollars. And so we track everything individually just to maintain our somewhat sanity and make sure that we don't get lost in too big of a picture. Overall, we're feeling really good where this is at, and we recommend moving $160,000 to the police station budget. And I'll get into that in just a moment, as to why, and we'll go through that. And then Mr. Becker will give the award letter recommendation. But at this point, is there any questions regarding the park, the connectivity, et cetera?
First, a comment and then a question. I agree with you that when you look at these, you don't look at these individually and individual projects, because when this project was first proposed and we first talked about all of the numbers, certainly each component of it, like the police station, the city hall, and the park, had individual line items and budgets and so on. But when we looked at it as a total, it was a, the project was all of those components. So it doesn't, it doesn't seem strange to me that we can consider moving funds from one portion of the project to another portion of the project, to me, because at least in my view, we've always seen it as one major project with just individual components. Big individual components.
Sure.
But definitely individual components with the project. And I guess maybe we all looked at it that way because we knew we were going to have one bond issue, which was going to cover most of the public elements. And we knew that that bond issue was going to raise just a certain amount of money. There was going to be no more. We couldn't use tax dollars. So the idea that if we had to move money from one component to another was how we imagined this was all going to work. So the idea of moving $160,000 from one component to another certainly doesn't bother me because it fits in with the way the whole project was structured from the beginning. The question I have is contingency. I was viewing contingency clearly erroneously. I was thought it was above ground, like sidewalks and pathways and the things connecting the people from one element to another, and clearly, it's more underground stuff. So you mentioned sewers and drainage and stuff. Are there other elements of that? Or are those?
The owner contingency, as we call it, is a catch-all for a lot of things that could happen on a project.
Did I say contingency? I'm sorry, I meant connectivity.
Okay, I'm sorry then. Let me, if you could rephrase that question.
What's included, describe for us in a little bit more detail what connectivity means, what those components, what those physical things are.
Sure. So anytime we start potentially tearing this building down, moving buildings, et cetera, there are water lines underneath your property. There are sewer lines. There are stormwater lines. There is fiber, connectivity, so on and so forth. All of that underground that is running through like a little maze or a system of tunnels underneath this couple-block area needs to be stabilized and understood, and all those pathways need to be either abandoned, moved, or reconnected in different spots. And so as we are doing all of this work, we've always contended that we needed a connectivity or horizontal stabilization program to pull it all together.
Okay.
And that's really what we're doing, is working to, you know, make sure that the proper water lines, sewer lines, storm drainage, runoff, et cetera. You have an engineer on board, Noack and Fraus, that has helped us through all the engineering and planning, and then we've done all that construction. And right now, we feel there's still some dollars left, but the majority of it, the vast, big dollars where we thought we could run into some unforeseen problems with soil conditions, we feel pretty good, and we've completed the bulk of it.
Okay, all right, thanks.
So just to confirm, connectivity isn't a project in itself, so to speak. It's really connecting the entire project together, bringing it together, and it's driven what you need to do by all the other elements, by the police station, by the park, by city hall.
Correct.
By the parking garage, to drive that what we've carved out to analyze it as an independent project.
Yeah, and it culminates with a park right on top in the middle.
Commissioner Dubb.
Yeah, just want to make sure I'm clear that what we're seeing here is that even after the $160,000 transfer out of this fund to the police station fund, we're looking at $310,000 remaining contingency since project is projected. Right now, at about $300,000 and change under budget.
You are correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? I'll move on to the police. The police station, current budget, $20 million. As you can see where we stand today, this last bid award, we are over budget on some individual items as we come down to the final wire. There could be a variety of reasons for that. You never know until you actually bid a project. We feel fairly comfortable where we are, that if this is awarded, the majority of all construction has been bid out and done. The only thing that is left is predominantly on the project as a whole, would be your FF and ENT program, meaning furniture fixtures, equipment, and technology. Overall, the project would be a little bit over budget on this particular line item. Now, there's a way that we can pull this into balance, and there's a variety of things, and I'm going to talk about them real quick here. And then I think Todd and Chris will talk more definitively in the award letter recommendation. But what you have is value engineering of $250,000 that is included in our actual committed forecast. That's that middle number 15208. You'll see that star footnote. You'll also see DDA site work. The DDA has committed to providing $250,000 of extra site and related parking to this project. Really what it's coming down to is that site connectivity or all the site work around the police building for a total of $500,000. That is reflected in that 15208 net of those dollars to make it palatable. The other thing you'll see is we've moved the furniture, technology, and equipment budget down $500,000. When we first set this budget, many of you that were on the original commission at the time, we were planning it, because we knew this project was a far way out, and we weren't quite sure what we were going to do, you'll remember, we put a 15% number on it, and we said it's 15% of cost. And we knew that that would be rather healthy at the time, but over years, that may get eroded away. We've looked at it, and we feel really good about all the different projects. There's technology and equipment in the parking deck. There's, you know, technology and equipment at the park. City Hall, we've looked at, and we've analyzed it over the year, specifically in the last, you know, 60 days, and we feel fairly comfortable. But the police station, due to the size of the program itself and the way that the police station operates and works and shifts and things of that nature, we feel it's heavy. And we've done some work with one of your consortium partners that you belong to, just to dive into and make sure that we're not off-base in reducing this furniture. We certainly don't want to short-change, build a beautiful building, and then the chief be rather upset with me and come hump me down because he doesn't have good furniture and equipment in the police station when it's finished. So we've done a lot of due diligence on this topic. We feel that we can save $500,000. Unfortunately, you never know until you actually go through and bid. The nice thing on a consortium bid is it's already been bid. So we can actually, we went through it in painstaking detail and looked at it and said, these prices have already been bid. It's been bid through a consortium. So we feel good that we know hard numbers that we can bring in and satisfy the chief to his satisfaction. So we're fairly confident in that $500,000. The other thing is the DDA dollars are been awarded and done, and so those dollars are there. So really, what we had to do is find a way to plug the $250,000, which is value engineering, and I'll let my counterpart, Chris Becker, and Todd Fenton, talk a little bit about that. But we feel it did not disrupt the functionality of the building at all. And so overall, when it's all said and done, the chief is going to be quite proud, and all of you will be quite proud of this building. So between all that, we still had a little bit of a problem. We wanted to make sure we had enough contingency because we're just really getting the hold up right now. And we want to start out with the same contingency that we planned on from the very beginning. And so by transferring 160 from the connectivity, what you'll see is we end up in the end, we're about $400,000 and change in contingency walking into the program, which, when you look at on the far-left side, we originally planned 400 the whole time. So overall, we feel pretty good. You'd still have $400,000 in contingency on top of the total program. If I were to add up, you know, all the different contingencies, we feel fairly comfortable where we are in the budget, specifically with only having to bid furniture and technology left. We've had lots of conversations. We meet every other Thursday as a team. We've been doing that for probably a good year and a half now. And so with that said, we feel really great. We think the parking deck's going to open up, as Mr. Johnson said, in two weeks, not maybe next month, but in two weeks. We're under budget as we sit today, and the project's running along rather smoothly. The one thing I would put out, you see a footnote down here, we do not include issuance cost and insurance and interest reserves. That was never part of our budget. That was always forecasted a long, long time ago, and we talked about that. Other than that, I don't know if you have any other questions on the police budget specifically.
Any questions for Mr. Van Kert? Commissioner Douglas.
Yes, I guess this is sort of about the police budget. But so we sold bonds to finance this project, and the budget for the project includes contingencies for all components of it. If we finish the entire project, all three, these large three components excluding the parking deck, because those are revenue bonds, if we finish this and we're under budget, what happens to the money we didn't spend? And the second part of that would be, if there's money that we didn't spend, why aren't we spending it to deliver everything that we wanted in the police station?
Well, first off, you want to make sure you've actually completed the project, but any excess cash has to remain in a separate fund, and then it can be used to make the debt service payment.
Okay. Thanks.
And what I would say, as a program manager does this all the time, when we move in, nothing will be perfect, right? So any of you that have ever built a new house or done some kind of construction, there will be some things where you go, jeez, I never thought about that. And if there's dollars left over, sometimes that's what people will do. I've seen people say, we're going to save maybe a couple hundred thousand dollars just in case, when we move in, there are going to be some things that we just need to move, shuffle, adjust, et cetera. But if not, you always have the ability to just pay off the debt service.
Commissioner Macy.
Just going to follow up on that. I heard you say it can be used for the debt service payments. What else could it be used for, or is that it?
Completing the project or making debt service payments.
Those are the only two things that can be used for.
Take it over and use it for operations or anything like that.
Okay, thank you.
So, road ahead, where are we? We're about 40% complete. We're going to put a parking deck online in about two weeks. That's roughly, you know, $18 million of hard construction complete and done. The city hall is well underway, as you're aware, we've talked about the site connectivity. A lot of work has been done. Things have been bid, and we hope at this time, next year, I'll be doing this presentation again, and we'll be talking about getting ready for a grand opening of a city hall and a police station not too far behind that, and where we're at. So I don't know, we just kind of mapped out, rode ahead, just so you kind of knew where things were. We'd love to finish it in the fall of 2020, but because the park is all outside construction, we're just not quite sure. I mean, the spring has not been a great spring in terms of rain and some other things, so you just never know. If we can finish the park early in the fall of '20, we'd love to be able to do that, but if we can't in the middle of winter, we can't complete a park. And so it drifted into the spring, summer of '21. But overall, we're pretty excited. We're under budget. I think you've got some great buildings. The parking deck looks fantastic, and with that, I'll open up to any kind of general concerns, or we can talk about the actual bid award.
Any questions for Mr. Van Kert? Commissioner Dubb.
Sorry, I don't know if I missed it, or you didn't have one here. Is there an overall, where we're at with overall contingency remaining? How far we're running?
I'd have to add them up, Commissioner.
I know, I didn't want, it's too late for me to do that in my head.
Yeah. But, you know, 250 in the parking deck, you know, 300 and some with the park and the connectivity and streetscape. So you're over 500,000 between those two, and you have 300 and 400, 350, another 750. I mean, you're probably sitting on about a million two of contingency right now.
But we still... Before we kind of weigh down without about a million two running under budget that we still have as a contingency?
In case unforeseens arise, and I guarantee you, unforeseens will arise, and there will be issues. Again, when we do these GMPs, one of the mixed signals that I think some people get is, well, this is the guaranteed maximum price. I can't go past that. Well, it's the guaranteed maximum price for a very defined scope with some allowances built in because we don't have the defined scope at the time we award. And we'd rather award now and award all at once and then have contingency to deal with issues. But we feel really good where we're at right now in a total review.
Given where we are in the process with about 1.2 million left unbudgeted, unencumbered...
And after tonight's award, the only thing that you're really, I mean, there are going to be some small nickel and dime stuff, but the large part of construction has been bid, and we're really doing furniture and technology at that point, which, you know, technology, you know, can go anywhere. I mean, you can spend as much as you want or as little as you want, but we feel pretty good.
Right, because, I mean, we've got foundations in the ground, so we know what the soil types and all those issues are going to be, and we got all the bids out, well, the police station bids coming in right now. And so what you're saying is we got really just kind of two major areas, the FF and ENT, technology, that, you know, could go either way.
Yeah, and like I said, you're always going to run into some things or weather conditions or, you know, something could happen, and we have builder's risk and the whole nine yards and all that kind of contingency to cover that too, but you just never know on a construction program, so. Final thoughts, or should we move into the award?
I was going to ask if we're asking questions about the award yet, so.
Okay. I guess we can jump into the award.
I'll let Todd take over the award.
Sure, thank you, Greg. By way of background, there were two actual bids that we issued for this work. We compiled them as saying it was a second award. The first award for the police station trade contract work was made in February of this year. In total, these are 18 trades, and in each circumstance, we're recommending the lowest qualified bid on them. As Greg had said, together there, over 1.1 million dollars over the construction budget we had originally allotted for this police station. There were a number of methods that we thought about in order to bring it back within budget. I'll summarize again what Greg had already said. $250,000 who value... $250,000 for value engineering, and we can get into those items in a second. Reducing the police station's furniture and fixtures budget by $500,000. The DDA has placed into their upcoming budget $250,000 in site work that their executive director has said can be used on the stormwater detention portion of this project. And then finally, transferring the $160,000 of contingency from connectivity into this police station budget, which still will leave over $300,000 in the connectivity contingency budget. And while we have filled this gap, we still have not relied upon using any of the police station contingency funds on this project. So I know there's probably a lot of individual questions about some of the, either individual bids or what we did through value engineering. And I'll bring Chris up here to help me with some of those items.
Questions for Mr. Fenton? Commissioner Bruce?
Could you explain to us what value engineering means?
I'd gladly do that. It's really a process. When you come to a project and you see that you're over budget and you know you need to move forward, where the team, and I call it a project team, and the project team is the owner. Obviously, we bring the chief in on everything with the police station. Todd's also there and some other people with the city of Royal Oak. We have the design team, which is partners in architecture and SiDoc there. They're there. The construction manager, Colosani O'Brien, and Plant Maran Cressa. We come together to find ways, in looking at the components of the building, and what can we do to, you know, to, we will not, we won't, and we don't compromise any use of the facility. We don't compromise any long-term functionality of the facility. But we find ways where there might be a type of block, a concrete masonry unit that's used that's more expensive than another type. You'll see, and I'll go through some of the value engineering items that we've come up with, if you don't mind. We did change, we're looking to change some ground face CMU to split face CMU on the lower level. It's like a $39,000 change. We're also looking on the exterior. They have a burnished block, which is really, it's another type of ground face, but it's real high-end finish. And again, using split face block of the same color, that's a $25,000 savings. There's some cast stone. We are proposing to use cast stone instead of limestone on some of the exterior of the building. And that's at the savings of about $15,500. And having been in this business a long time, I've done that numerous times. I've actually gone, that kind of sounds funny, but I've done, gone to limestone and away from limestone. And here, limestone's more expensive on this project. So we're going to use a concrete product. And it will look exactly the same. It will last the same. We have some stone veneer up on the interior of the second floor. It's a really high-end finish. It's $43,000 worth of savings to go to a different type of finish. We're looking at reducing the size of the generator. One of the things we did design in is to have the entire building run off of the generator. Well, we talked to the chief, and we want all the critical functions to run off the generator. But you really don't need the whole building to run off the generator. We can save $55,000 by looking at a different generator. We have some radiant heat panels around certain portions of the building, particularly right next to windows. And it's a $43,000 savings to eliminate those radiant heat panels. You still have heat in the building. It's just a very specific pointed item that we're looking at there. And then light fixtures. We're looking at some alternate light fixtures. Now, we're still going to have LED light fixtures. We're still going to have the same illuminations, but it's a slightly less expensive light fixture, and we'll save $35,000. We have a number of things that were proposed, and there's a number of things and the chief can kind of verify that we're not going to do. There's just some things we're not going to do. But these are items where we can, we know we can save a minimum of $250,000 off the budget of the job, and that will actually reduce cost. So we're diving into that as a team right now. And that's really what value engineering is. You don't want to compromise the building, and we're not, particularly use and long-term functionality. And as a team, we're doing that. That's value engineering and the items that we're actually looking at.
Commissioner Bruce?
Please.
Is this process going to continue going forward as you?
I'd like to say no. We're really trying to define it all right here and right now. And then we make some slight modifications in the design, so we get everything right. We get the numbers. But we don't plan on value engineering past this point. We know where our budget is. We know where our numbers are. So we're in good shape to move forward with this last value engineering process.
Okay, but this isn't the first time that you've used it.
It's not, and that's right. When we first came out and we looked at it on the estimate side, not on bid numbers, we had a million-dollar problem. And we value engineered a number of things out of the building. We cut back. Remember, there was a green roof. That was a very expensive item. We had the geothermal HVAC system was a very expensive item. And those are some of the things that got value engineered before. Because between those two items, it was, you know, $750,000. And there's some other things that we did also along with that. But yeah, this is the second go-around, but it is the last.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Becker? Commissioner Macy?
Quickly following up, some of the things you listed that on the value engineering were radiant heat panels and the light fixtures, which will still be LED. I'm not going to pretend to understand any of this, but I do remember that we are not LE, LEED certified here, basically because we didn't want to pay for the LEED certification, but the building was still going to be LEED certified. Are any of these value engineering changes going to change that status?
No, they won't.
Okay.
That's why we're still going with the LED fixtures. We're still going with the proper, you know, wattage. You're saving power by using the type of light fixtures we are. We're still going to have a code compliant roof that's going to give us, that leads us up to the latest Michigan standards, which also fall into the LEED requirements. And then low VOC on finishes and equipment. And part of our furniture buy that we're looking at is we're going to have, the equipment we bring in is going to be, follow the LEED requirements, low VOCs, which is volatile organic compounds.
I know.
Not the, okay. For anybody that might not know what that is. But we're following all the LEED requirements and the sustainable items that we had planned originally.
Okay. Half a million dollars of furniture seems like a lot of furniture to me. That seems like a lot to lose.
As Greg mentioned before, and I know Don's very well of this, we went at a 15% look at what our budget was, off of the construction total. And when we saw we had this problem, you know, I'll admit, Plant Maran Cressa has worked with some other different designers on the furniture end. And what we're not going is with the really high-end furniture. We're not getting the real, but we're getting great furniture, but not the very high end. And we found by going through the consortium, going through partner, or the Omni Partners, is we can save the money by going through them with pre-bid equipment. And they still, you know, by buying from a manufacturer, we're still going to get the design services that we want. As a matter of fact, we've taken Chief and Todd and Don and Tim Twing around and showed them the kind of things that we can get for the city. And it's great furniture, but it's not the highest furniture. And so we had a budget that was a bit inflated on the furniture. And we're, at this stage, we're fortunate.
Deflating it now.
But we know how we can do it. We've still got to get the plan together. But we feel confident to report that to you today, that it can happen.
Okay, and then a question about some of these, some of these proposed awards. So a lot of the work that we've been having, that we've had done down here has been union work. And some of these proposals are non-union. And I'm wondering, in that case, do we do anything additional to certify that the people who are coming to work here on the buildings that are the center, the heart of our city, that they've been trained, that there have been any apprenticeships, that they're, have a good background to them? Or do we have any kind of certification of the employees who are working here at all?
I'll defer to Chris because he's actually worked with a couple of these personally. I don't believe there's a certification that would exist. Certainly, Colosani O'Brien is construction manager, and again, Plant Maran is an outside consultant. I was, in essence, taking their recommendation that these are reputable firms that are paying their employees rates that are comparable to the standards that you previously set here at the commission table. And I don't have anything, any evidence to suggest otherwise with the three that we're recommending here that are not union. I don't know if you want to elaborate on any of that.
At least a little bit on it. Of the three contractors, I've actually had the fortunate ability to work with two of them. One of them's the asphalt paving contractor, ASI. And they're a very reputable firm with good quality people. Because what we want is the good quality contractor that's going to give us the product that we want. And we're not recommending anybody that wouldn't do that. The other contractor I've worked with is actually the glass and glazing, it was B&amp;B Glass. And they've been around for a while. They do good quality work. And both of these contractors I've worked with is in my past experience in doing some schoolwork. And so, you know, it was a completely open bid market for them. These are two good contractors. I'll admit that Eco Painting, I have not worked with before, but Colosani O'Brien did a very thorough review of their references, a very thorough review of their past work. And they're a quality contractor. Again, we're not bringing anybody on here that's not going to be, give us the quality of work that we want in the city of Royal Oak. I hope that answers your question.
It does, it does, but I've got, well, I've got a follow-up to it. So, you know, you said we picked the lowest qualified bid for all of these. And that's great, it's a great thing to be not spending money we don't have to spend. But when I look at some of the range of these, some of the bids, which is quite a large range for some of them, it makes me a little bit nervous to be picking the lowest bid all the time. If I had someone come to my house and bid, for instance, a tree removal, and there was a $10,000 difference, I don't know that I would necessarily go with the person who said $500 to remove the tree. I might be afraid the tree was going to fall in my house. So I'm just, I'm wondering, when you say lowest qualified bid, what's going into that?
Really, the standard of quality that the contractor works at, their safety program, that they have a low EMR. We ask for their training programs, and can they show us how they train their people?
So you do have that information on the training?
There's, these contractors have training programs. They just don't hire guys off the street. You know, it's not someone coming out of the back of their car or their truck. They're good, quality people. And that's what we look for. We look for a good safety record. We look for training programs. We look to see that their people are productive. We believe that what we're recommending are those contractors. I know they are with ASI and B&amp;B. But the painter is someone that I can't personally vouch for. There's a number of the contractors that we're making, the union guys that I've worked with in the past. And I'm happy to see VentCon is our mechanical guy. We have a very good, we're making a recommendation on a very good mechanical guy. And if you look at his number compared to the low bidder, I mean, that was a big cost to, why do we have the tight budget? You know, we had to make sure Sharon, and what we found out is they don't do duck shop drawings, which on this kind of job, you just can't do that. And they couldn't meet the requirements of the job. So that's why we didn't go with a low bidder there. They really weren't qualified. There's a couple other cases like that if you, you know, want to ask those questions. But we're recommending a group of quality contractors that we think can do the job. You do see the cost difference. You're approving the award.
Right. It's interesting that we've talked about that there will be, it seems like there will be money left with the contingency. Going over the budget, what those contingencies are for?
Contingency, one of the things we didn't talk about is really, it's a cover of risk on the job. There's a certain amount of work on drawings. But the things, we talked about this on the parking deck before. When you're in the ground, you're at your highest risk because there's things you don't know are underground. And we ran across a number of those in the parking deck. And I'm, you know, we're in the ground right now. We're going to maybe find a few of those things on the city hall and the police station. You know, we always hope that we can minimize those. But contingency is also a coverage of risk. And that's why we let, you know, we're sitting, and not to rephrase what Greg said, but you know, we've got 250 over on the parking deck, but we know we can't really use that anywhere else. We have roughly a million dollars on the connectivity park, city hall, and police station. We're suggesting to use some of the connectivity park on police station, but ultimately, you guys have the choice. When we get down, what's left on the job comes back to the city. But it's risks that we want, we got to cover, so we can't take care, we can't take that quick. But if you want to award to someone other than the low qualified bidder that we're recommending, that's your choice. I hope you understand.
I totally, I understand.
Okay.
And I think this is my last question for the moment is, it was brought up today that there's quite a large amount, 400-plus thousand, that is, part of this resolution is to say, you know, city staff can recommend up to $480,000 or something like that of change orders without coming back to this body for approval. And again, it seems like a pretty large amount. And I know we had a long discussion several months ago when, you know, several, four or five months of those change orders came through, and we were a little bit alarmed by that. So I thought we had discussed back then, having it come back in more chunks, that we would see that rather than have it be come back possibly up to $400,000 at one time.
What we did say we're going to do, and we will, is report back to you on a monthly basis what kind of change order work is happening. The irony is, is we've had very little since we met with you on the parking deck. We have things getting priced out now, and they go to the architect first, so they can vet the price. And next month, we'll be bringing you some change order items on the different projects. So yeah, we haven't seen anything lately because of that reason right there.
Okay.
Commissioner Dubb?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, a couple things to tag on to Commissioner Macy's. You know, I appreciate her thinking on, you know, the fact that we don't want to be putting, you know, low cost ahead of value, I think, from our entire, you know, outset. We've made it clear that if we're going to spend, you know, the people's money, we want the highest quality product that we can get that's going to stand for generations. And so, you know, we want to make sure that we're hiring firms that have a great track record. Their people make a living wage. They're well-trained. They have a great safety record. They're up to all those latest regs. And I think in my experience, and you kind of what we said at the table, some of us appreciate that at union shops, you know, that's a safe way to get all those things. In this case, where we have other firms that have come in at a lower bid, you're saying that in your experience and having investigated these firms, you're confident that we're getting that value?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And the only one I haven't worked in before is the painter. I've worked with the other, just recently with ASI, and they're a very reputable firm. And B&amp;B is also, and remember, we rebid the glass and glazing because we were concerned with not getting the right. And we still only got really two bids. So ironically, the other bidder that is union and we're not recommending is doing city hall. Madison Ice Glass is doing city hall.
And, yeah, so we're almost finished with all of our, is this the end of our contracts? Is there a last few contracts? There's a couple more outstanding.
There's probably one more on the police station tile work that they're really having to hit on hard yet. That's the last one I know of. Other than that, this is all the contracts.
Based on, you know, the standards and the rubric that we're using to recommend contractors, you know, lowest qualified bid being one of those, well, like 95% of the shops that we have on this job, 98% of the shops we have on the shop have been union shops? Is that accurate?
I did a little analysis just recently, and really, dollar-wise, it's 97% union contractors. Number of bidders overall, it's like 90... Number of bidders overall, it's like 94?
Okay.
Overall?
Overall, it's 94.
So that awards of contracts, we're high. We're, we're, we're where we should be.
I feel good about that. I feel that means we pursued in earnest all of the values that we've said we want going into this project to make sure we're getting the best return on dollar for our residents, and that we're respecting the workers who are actually making it happen.
Couldn't agree with you more.
Okay. On the, the, uh, change order approvals, I assume that's a question of timing. Then unless we're going to have a, a special commission meeting, or you have to call together an emergency meeting for us to approve every change order, that's going to slow things down and end up costing us more money.
That, that's correct.
Is that accurate?
That, that, that's one of the reasons behind that. I don't think we're going to have any big change order that don't come to you guys right away.
Okay.
But little things that can be $25,000. And you're digging a hole in the ground, you, you gotta do it, and you gotta do it quick.
Right. You don't want to send the whole crew home and then tell them to come back next week after the city commission has a meeting. That's, that's not an efficient way to build, I would assume.
Exactly.
Okay. So I think, yeah, we need to trust the experts to, to make construction decisions as long as it's within the budget that we've laid out, and that's what we're talking about here, correct? Is that right?
Especially since.
That's correct.
Okay. So everything's on budget. No one's going to be authorized to spend anything that's not included in this budget, correct?
That's correct.
All right. And then lastly, I think a thoughtful question was actually asked earlier. I understand, so value engineering is, you know, we're kind of revisiting now that we have a clear idea of the project and finding ways to reduce costs now that we have a better view to exactly what we want and what we need. And maybe some things didn't come in as we expected, so we can swap those out.
Yes.
So, you know, we're finding lower cost items that, like you said, are in no way impacting the functionality or the efficiency of the building.
No, no compromise to the functionality and use of the facility.
Okay. And I, I know we used that rough 15% figure, just kind of like a rough industry standard for fitting out the police building. And we found another option, which is saving a, a bunch of dollars, but I think it was a reasonable question. Were we aware of this service at the outset? And it just, we, we didn't know if it was the right fit at the time, the Omnia partners? Was that something that was kind of, that was in the, in our line of thinking, but we didn't know if that'd be the right way to go? I'm just curious if this is something that came to our attention when we really started looking for ways to, to reduce costs?
It, it really came out when we were looking for ways to save money. We were, I've already written a RFP to go out for design services for, for FFNE. And we would have hired a, a designer, and then we would have bid out work. And, and we, and we don't, we couldn't guarantee, and right now, we feel we can guarantee to save 500,000. We can't guarantee that with bringing a designer in.
Oh, understood. I, I think this is great. I think it's a great proposal. I just want to say, like, this is a result of you guys really digging in and finding every way to achieve savings in this budget. Is that accurate?
That's exactly what happened. Yes, sir.
Okay. So this isn't something that we saw when we were first discussing it. We waved it away. This is something that, when you, when you really started like sharpening the pencil, this came, this rose to the top as an option.
We were trying to, to follow what was an industry standard, but also the way the City of Royal Oak wants us to purchase is, you know, bid the services. And we were following that. And yes, we dug deeper and looked at some things. And really, thanks to Greg, that's, that's where we came across this. And we feel we can guarantee that we're going to save that kind of money, which is what we need for these projects.
Right.
I'll just interject just for a second. We're working with Plant Moran on a, a variety of different ways to save that money. That was one proposal that the City of Royal Oak has utilized in the past, this sort of consortium bidding. We are still doing our due diligence as well. We know what, how much we want to save on that budget. And we would apply the same mechanism by which we're buying furniture for city hall and the police station at the same time. But by no means, if we make that decision, we'll bring that decision back to the commission at a later date. But we're, we're evaluating a lot of options right now. That one is one that makes sense because we know the guaranteed savings, and we've worked with the, the system before.
I guess I would just reiterate that, you know, I, I think we made environmental sustainability one of the goals and the, you know, hallmarks of this project. And so I would want to save, you know, 10, $20,000 now, but add $100,000 to operating cost over the next 20 years by reducing the efficiency of the building. So.
We haven't gotten to Ikea yet.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
No, we're staying to the standards that have been set.
Great. Thanks.
Commissioner Douglas and Commissioner Levaser.
Yeah, apropos of the Commissioner Dubb's comment about the, the change orders. You know, we're authorizing 400,000, the potential for $400,000 in change orders, that's 2% of the project budget. I mean, that means a $400,000 change order is still only 2% of the budget. And if we've got change orders that are in the amount of, you know, 20,000, $50,000, I mean, those are, you know, rounding errors.
Commissioner Levaser.
Following up on the change order, order issue, I would feel more comfortable if we at least had some sort of cap on any particular change order. I, I understand the need to move quickly sometimes. But if it's truly a major expense, and we have $400,000 here, we could talk about some real big expenses. And that really truly should come to this commission first. So I want to get a sense for, for what is that number that you think is reasonable to basically say this is the discretion of the staff, and otherwise it needs to come to the commission?
Wow. I've worked for a number of different owners in the past, and I've seen $50,000, and I've seen $100,000. I, I kind of got to come back to you, and what, what are you comfortable with? I'm thinking, and Todd, we haven't seen a lot of big ones. Matter of fact, most of them are, the high, majority of them are small. But I, I, I think anything over $50,000, or, you know, maybe that's, maybe that's a number, maybe $100,000. We are not going to, we are not going to utilize your money without do, you know, performing all due diligence. That isn't going to happen. I'll just, I'll just throw one thing out. And remember when we were trying to do geothermal, and we, we did a test well? And then we hit methane gas, which, you know, we had to shut it down. Now, that was really small, but it could have been something big. And so I can't define it well. Greg?
If I could. Been doing this 27 years, seen it a lot. It's a good question. Typically, I see most of our clients say that if, with it's in contingency, then it's part of the budget. If you do, did want to set a threshold, I would actually bump that up more, like $100,000. Particularly if you look at it and say, we have about a million dollars left in contingency in total in what I call the general obligation debt, Don, of a million dollars. If we did 100,000, that's 10%.
So Mr. Van Kirk, also too, I mean, we talk about amount, but what about type? I mean, for me, you know, whether it's 100,000, or 10,000, or 5,000, if you got a hole in the ground and you need to make a decision right away to, to do an audible to execute the completion of the project, which, you know, this commission voted for, previous commissions voted for unanimously. So the directive is make this happen. And in your best judgment, if, you know, something happens, a piece of steel, like something didn't go, something went awry. You know, or is it more the contingency where instead of saying the amount, it's, hey, if you want to add a fountain in the front, okay, come talk to us, because that wasn't really the scope of the project. So I look at it maybe in the auto industry, fit, form, and function, right? If it doesn't affect those, then okay.
Sure.
But if it's going to affect the, you know, square footage, if it's going to have a business effect, or a service effect, or a impact on employees, or an impact on, you know, something that are citizens, other than just, hey, we need to, you know, buy a bigger Band-Aid for this situation that we didn't see. Is that typical as well?
Yes. So the concern really would be is that if you had a million dollars contingency left, right? And, and we don't spend it all, well, then we don't want to just go buy frivolous things.
Right.
And I understand, and can appreciate that. So, so sometimes people will put a threshold, anything over 100,000 with a million dollars, that's 10%. That seems reasonable. Another way that I've seen it done is two signatures. So as long as it is within the budget, meaning the contingency budget, and either the city manager and/or the mayor both sign it, that's the emergency clause to, to what you speak. So any cosmetic changes, meaning we want to add a fountain, would have to come back if it's greater than $100,000. But if it's an emergency over $100,000, as long as it has two signatures on the change order, and it's deemed an emergency, and two different bodies sign it, then I've seen that happen. And that works rather well when there's an emergency. I, I always give the, and I gave this example today. I once had a high school that we were building that said, we want, we want approval of every change order, period. Anything over $500. It was an $80 million high school. The first day, at 9:20, we had our first change order and emergency school board meeting. It, it, it's a matter of relative and scale, and where you want to be. You know, I would probably recommend $100,000 would be the right number. So if it's over that in cosmetic, then you must come back. And if it's over 100,000, if it's an emergency, maybe it takes two signatures, and you have three people that can sign. So maybe it's council, city manager, mayor. And as long as two of the three sign or aware and they're avail, because sometimes people are on vacation too. So those are provisions that we've done in the past that work rather well. Or, like I said, I have seen it where it's, as long as it's within contingency, then there's no issue. So it's really your discretion.
Okay.
I have, I have some follow-ups on a different issue though, if I may. And Chris, I want to thank you for responding to some emails of mine earlier. But if we could just kind of delve into those a little bit. There were a handful of proposed contracts where the, the supporting documentation seemed to indicate there were several bidders, but there was only one bidder that had actual numbers that were appearing in the supporting documentation. Can, can you tell us what was going on there?
Yeah, I can. And by the way, Randy, thank you for the questions. And Shar, thank you for the questions or things. That was, it's nice because it allows us to prepare for you guys to give you the right answers. And I got to make sure I get the right, the right contractors now, because your questions are pretty straightforward. Like the painting contractor, there were two bids that were lower than them. And one of them's Detroit Spectrum, someone I worked with before, that was very good, and another called Meta. But, but they excluded the epoxy and the special coatings that go on the floors. And, and those numbers are probably $70,000 worth of work. So those two guys didn't have a complete scope of work. They weren't the low qualified bidder. Even though Detroit Spectrum, I've done a number of jobs with him, but he didn't bid the scope right. So that, that was painting.
I, I take, that was communicated in advance, this is what we want included in the bid?
Yeah, the, the scope of work that Colosani O'Brien wrote was very specific. And you want to cover every painting item, and it very specifically said that. As a matter of fact, they do that with every scope of work, exactly what they want covered. Otherwise, you'd get numbers across the board that you'd not be able to tell. So when they scope someone out, they go through every item that they're supposed to have. These guys didn't have very key items in the police station, particularly on the ground floor.
So that was painting, I believe HVAC was similar.
HVAC is, is the next one. And we did have a, a good low number. It was, and, and it really had nothing to do with, you know, what kind of a contract they were. But they didn't include a very key item in the scope of work, which is how you plan on how, you got to do your duck work, and you got to coordinate it within the building, and there's shop drawings required. And then they're very part of the specifications. And when they were pushed that that had to happen, they decided to pull their bid. They decided that they didn't have it. Now, I think there's a little more to it. He saw how low he was and probably couldn't do the job for the money. But they pulled their bid. But the reasons that we didn't like, and, and really, these duck shop drawings are huge for the coordination on this type of a job. But they actually pulled their bid. Then on landscaping is the next one, I, I, just to keep going. Landscaping had two bidders that were lower, and they were pretty significantly lower. But they also didn't include types of work. And, and one of the things in the landscaping is there's some site furnishings that are in that scope of work. Well, they had excluded the, the site furnishings. They also excluded the hydro seating. Now, there's not a lot of it, but there's enough of it to make it a significant number. And they also missed some tree gates and some bite racks that were also included. So it, there's a number of things that it goes farther in, in what I think I sent back to you. But the guys didn't include the full scope of work. And, and to add that scope back in, which is really not the right way to bid anyways, they would have been higher. And so they did not get awarded the work.
Okay. Now, a couple of the items. We, we had a one bid that was recommended. If we, if we looked at the supporting documentation, we had the information what this person was bidding, what this entity was bidding. And then there may have been three or four or five different other entities listed there with no numbers. And my understanding from our emails is that there really was only one bid, but we had all these other firms referenced there, and I was just wondering what was going on there. The ones that reference here, we're, we're looking at access flooring. We're looking at.
Visual displays and operable partitions.
Yeah.
And Colosani does what a lot of contractors do, is they write the names of everybody they invited specifically for the job. And they're inspect, they're expecting bids from them. And they put them on their bid tabulation sheet, but the guys never submitted a bid. So that's why their name is on there, but they didn't submit a bid. We only got one bid for those three categories. And then access flooring, we, we didn't rebid access flooring. One of the reasons we didn't is we were well under budget. And really, like the best contractor in the area is Bonnet's. They're, they're a great contractor, union contractor. So they didn't go back out the bid for that. But they did go back out the bid for visual displays and the operable partitions. And again, we only got one bid, and both of these contractors had the full scope of work. And they're good contractors. I've actually worked with both of these guys. And Gardner Rose is probably, if not the best, one, you know, in the top two for operable partitions in the area. So they made the recommendation. It made sense to me, and that's why we recommended them. Because we rebid it and only got one bid. The names at the top are who they invited to bid, but we didn't get bids from them.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Mr. Becker, or Mr. Fenton, or Mr. Van Kirk? Commissioner Levaser?
Questions probably directed more toward Don with regard to the issue of the change orders. And we heard what Greg indicated, as far as some of the possibilities. Perhaps we set a, a ceiling, and anything above that would require a couple of sign-offs. And I think there's some merit in approaching it that way. Just want to get your perspective on what you might recommend there.
Actually, the suggestion that Greg made makes a great deal of sense. Because you've got people coming from three different aspects. You know, the city attorney is independent. He works for the commission. He doesn't work for me. The mayor, of course, is directly representing the commission. And then you've got my side from administration. You might want to include the mayor pro tem as an alternate if the, if the mayor isn't available. And on my side, I might want to include Cory if I'm not available.
Anything over 100,000?
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Dubb?
I'm, I'm comfortable with that. And I would then say that the commission, should such a, you know, signature gathering be necessary, the commission is immediately notified via email of any contingency that rose to that level.
Got a motion, or is it?
Oh, yeah, I'll make the motion. And, and we need to.
Well, I mean, you can make that motion on the contingency independent of this recommendation.
I'll make the motion on the contingency policy.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Dubb. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Levaser. Discussion, Commissioner Gibbs?
I, I think I want to amend it to say $100,000 or an emergency. So it, it may be a $200,000 or $300,000, God forbid, emergency. But we still want somebody to sign off. And I've done, not personally, but I've done the legal work for construction projects, and it happens. And so I would. And so I would recommend that, or I amend to include a hundred grand or emergency.
Okay, we have a motion for amendment and we have a second to that amendment?
I'll second the amendment.
Okay.
But I think it needs.
Discussion.
To clarify, you're saying if, in the opinion of our experts, the viability of the project or escalating costs are at risk or the public safety is at risk, like an emergency that's like, we need to decide now to do something that's going to cost more than that one fifty. You're saying in that circumstance, the sign off would be also allowable?
Right, and I would say two of the three and we can include Commissioner Douglas as mayor pro tem. And we can include Chief O'Donoghue as.
Alternates?
Alternates, yeah.
That's, that makes sense. That makes a lot of sense.
And Mr. Gillum, obviously.
Okay, Commissioner Dubac?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that amendment as long as we all have a shared understanding of what that trigger would be.
How's it different than what you said to begin with?
So my motion was that anything over a hundred thousand would require a sign off regardless of what it is. My, from my understanding, Commissioner Gibbs, she's suggesting that the sign off be allowed to go above that hundred thousand in a case where there's an immediate threat to the viability of the project, threat of dramatically escalating costs if they don't decide immediately, or the public safety.
Correct, that's the same thing. Like, you're saying that yours is only if it's exactly a hundred thousand dollars? And hers is if it's a hundred and two thousand dollars? Because it seems like anything above a hundred thousand dollars triggers the emergency exception, right?
Yeah, that's what's confusing.
Yeah, I guess that's true. But if it's, well, an emergency doesn't have to cost two hundred thousand dollars. I guess we wouldn't need a sign off anyway, so yeah.
It's late. I got turned around.
I think you got turned around.
What we're doing is what you're saying, all right?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
We all agree on what we're doing. I think that's the key point.
I'm sorry, guys. My brain's turning a mush.
Okay.
Well, we have an amendment on the table. So we should pull it back?
She could withdraw it.
I'll withdraw it.
All right, so what we have is a motion on the table that says, hey, anything under a hundred grand, staff can, or construction manager can move forward with contingency. Anything above a hundred thousand dollars, so long as it's an emergency, requires the dual signature policy of the city manager, the mayor, the city attorney, and as alternates, mayor pro tem and the assistant city manager, who happens to be the police chief.
And I believe the motion also calls for immediate notification to the residents.
Yes, immediate notification via email upon execution. Okay. I'll call for the vote. All those who favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Okay. Commissioner Dubac?
I'll move for the resolution as presented.
Motion by Commissioner Dubac. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Douglas. Discussion. Commissioner Dubac?
I just want to compliment our whole staff. I think everyone's really doing their due diligence here. Like, all of our questions were answered adequately. And I'm really excited and optimistic about how this is moving forward. So thank you, everybody.
Yeah. Agreed. All right, I'll call for the vote. All those who favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. That brings us to item number thirteen, which is approval of amendments to property registration ordinance, first reading. Mr. Craig or Mr. Gillum who wants to?
I'll take this one.
Okay.
So what I'm asking you to approve is amendments to the property registration ordinance. It's really a modification to how we handle rentals. It'll include vacant properties. And then it gets more into registering the properties, which is how we treat the rentals right now anyway. So it just cleans up some of the practice that we're actually doing for the rentals, which haven't been much of an issue. But this is how we've modified it. So what you have in the draft is a copy of strikeouts and underlines where we've removed and added. And the essential difference is that it includes vacant properties. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from Mr. Craig. Commissioner Gibbs first.
How, if the property is already vacant and we know of some that already are, like 4303 Verona Circle, will those owners be contacted and told to that they have to register their property? Or is, can neighbors call and tell you, tell the city that there's a vacant house and they have to get registered? I'm not sure how the procedure is going to work for this and if it's going to go for houses that have been vacant for the six, seven, eight months prior to us enacting this ordinance.
When the ordinance is enacted, it will bring those properties into a requirement of needing to be licensed. So it'll be a process that we're going through. And yes, it'll be neighbors calling, it'll be us, you know, searching around. Ones that we know that are vacant, we'll notify the owners and get them to come into compliance.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Levaser?
I've got a handful of questions. The first is, how might this help us in dealing with a longtime vacant property that's become a nuisance for a neighborhood? How is this a tool? What does this do to help us deal with that problem?
It expands our authority a little bit on those properties. First is, they're going to register with us and we will know who the owner is. One of our challenges is Michigan law does not specify that you have to tell us when you own a piece of property. We have lots of dead people that own property. So what this is going to do is it's going to bring in a responsible party that we're going to identify as a person who lives in the state of Michigan, who we can make responsible for that property. And it also gives us the ability to perform the inspections. Right now, I don't have authority to walk onto a vacant property and look in the backyard. I, that would be illegal. But this would open that avenue up for us as a registered property that with reasonable notice to the owner, we could do that.
Okay, and just a little bit of follow-up in that respect. Let's say that you have a property that should be registered, should be registered as vacant, but the owner chooses not to. What's our hammer in that instance?
Well, we have, we have two vehicles that we can use there. One is to apply a fee of a dollar a day, late fee. And the second is to ticket.
Okay. There's a, there's a couple other aspects here. You mentioned the inspection and this given the authority. My understanding is there's one of, and Mr. Gillum can correct me if I'm wrong or perhaps add to it. In order to go onto a property, you either need occupant's permission, owner's permission, or you need a warrant. Is that accurate? Or do you believe that this would not require you to have one of those three?
I can let Mr. Gillum speak to the legal aspect of the ordinance as far as the inspection. But it would be my understanding that that if we have the right to go onto that property with reasonable notice during reasonable times.
The intention would be to, with this kind of a registration ordinance, would be to make the search more of an administrative search than a traditional search, I guess, if you will, in the sense that, for example, the police department might do a search or something like that. So my interpretation of this would be that if there was reasonable cause, the code enforcement staff would have the ability to enter onto the premises, that is, to go onto the property, to take a look at the residence to determine if it was vacant and if there were serious problems that were visible to the naked eye in terms of actually being able to go into the house proper. Regardless of reasonable cause or not, there would still be an administrative search warrant that would have to be issued by our office before the code enforcement staff could actually physically go into a property. We would still have to have some judicial review before they could physically enter a residence.
Okay, but because it's administrative, the standard is lower to obtain that?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And I'll apologize. I misunderstood. I was just pertaining to the outside of the house, not to entering the property. We wouldn't do that without, without the owner's permission or without obtaining a search warrant to do that.
Okay, there's a few things about this that concern me. Number one is, it basically calls for a registration of any property that's vacant for thirty days. And I see this as capturing a lot of situations that maybe we don't want to capture. And I'll just name a few. You've got someone who's bought a new house. They're putting this one on the market. They're moving into their brand new house and this one is taking a little while to get sold. But it's not a problem house. And I don't know that we want that house to be registered. Someone who moves mom into a nursing facility or unfortunately she passes, family's dealing with the house after the fact, dealing with the estate, going about the regular business of that, and it takes more than a month. I again, don't think that that's a scenario that we want to capture by this. So I'm wondering why thirty days and perhaps there's a different number that may be appropriate. But those are some of the concerns I have on that issue.
I guess I can't speak to the, the thirty days to me was a reasonable amount of time that if something is left open, then that we would consider it vacant. And we would need to, the whole purpose of it is, is to know who the owner is and where they are and how to get a hold of them. And how, so we can notify them if there's a violation, if there's tall grass, a broken window. And I can't do that if I don't know who they are or where they live. So that would be the purpose behind it. And we, licensing is not about dealing with a problem or a bad. I, we license thousands of rentals and very few of them are problems. That's not the requirement for a license is not to just deal with the problem issues.
I take right now, if you don't have something registered, you would turn either to the tax rolls or you would turn to the registered deeds to determine who might be responsible?
That's our first attempt, but it's often not reliable.
Okay. Another thing that I had a little bit of a concern about was the responsible party. I can understand wanting a local contact, but I've seen other communities where, in my opinion, they've been abusive of say, a professional property manager. Maybe they're dealing with a client who's overseas or out of state, whatever, and they have a problem client, but the screws are turned on this essentially innocent professional simply because they're local. And so I'm a little bit concerned about that right there.
Well, that would be the choice of that person to become the responsible party. We're not, we're not making that person become a responsible party. That would be their professional choice to be a responsible party for this property if they decided to do that. If they're the ones who are saying, I have an owner who's overseas, I'm the one who's dealing with everything, then they're the one who is to take responsibility. But one of our bigger problems is LLCs and corporations. And as you've dealt with a very familiar vacant property that's an issue, LLCs do not have to identify who their owners are. Nobody knows who the owner of an LLC is. The state doesn't know. We don't know. And so everybody can just say, I'm not an owner, I'm a resident agent, or I'm a property manager. By doing this, we're getting a person who is physically responsible, who lives in the state of Michigan, who will have to answer for that property if it's not maintained.
My concern there is we may scare away some responsible people because they have an irresponsible client that they can't control. Where they basically said, this is a pain in the butt, I'm getting ticketed, I'm being threatened with a misdemeanor, and I'm not taking it anymore. And they simply say, I quit rather than work to try to resolve the issue.
Well, then we would require a new responsible party. But we have to find somebody that's, for thirteen years, I have fought the fight of trying to find the person behind the LLC. And I understand why they exist. They exist to provide that arm's length for liability purposes if they were to get sued. But I don't think it was ever meant to extend to protecting somebody from criminal acts.
If they're that irresponsible, they're not going to appoint another responsible party.
Then we proceed back to our original process of ticketing and adding fees.
I mean, my perspective is, we've got some teeth here. I mean, we would have the ability to essentially lean the property if we take some sort of action to abate. And I believe that that would be sufficient teeth to address our concerns without necessarily holding a innocent professional responsible for something that they truly don't have control over.
Well, it is their choice. And this provision did come from a lot of property managers wanting to be involved in this process. Right now, we don't involve property managers in this process because they don't have legal accountability for the property. They may have a contract with an owner to perform services, but I can't ticket them for the window not being repaired because they have a contract with an owner. So I have a lot of property managers who want to take this role on and we don't allow it right now. So this would open the door up for a lot of those property managers who want to be this person.
Okay, now turning to Mr. Gillum. I believe the ultimate remedy, if you have someone who's irresponsible, who's essentially holding a property in a neighborhood that's become a blight, become a nuisance, that's really an abatement issue through the circuit court. Does this assist us in pursuing such an action?
I mean, potentially, if we can document that there's property that is vacant and it's been vacant for a long period of time, that would, that would help in terms of a nuisance abatement action. But the fact that the property is vacant in and of itself wouldn't be a basis for the nuisance action. There would have to be other violations that would have to exist above and beyond the mere vacancy itself.
All right, so we have open to the elements. We have a place of rodent harborage. We have various other things that could be an issue. Could repeated violations of overgrown weeds be a basis? Even if it's eventually cut after it's two feet tall?
In terms of a nuisance, probably not. If for no other reason, because we have another remedy. And under the existing state statutes and the city code, tall grass is a situation that we can remedy ourselves by cutting the tall grass and then backcharging the property for the cost. So I don't think that would rise to something, that would rise to the level of something that would give us the ability to go to circuit court and ask a judge to give us the ability to essentially take control of the property.
I know some other people want to jump in here. I have Commissioner Dubac, Commissioner Macy, Commissioner Perusch, and Commissioner Douglas in the interim.
All right, real quick. I appreciate, you know, Commissioner Levaser wanted to get more specific on what is vacant. So I see the definition here is shall mean unoccupied for a period of time more than thirty days. But then it goes on to say, shall not include property that is temporarily unoccupied while the residents are away on vacation or attending their personal business, which I think is getting close to some of those, you know, families working out their estate type issues. But we probably need to tighten it up a bit. Or a property that is not intended to be left vacant. And that one seems squishy to me because I don't know how we're proving intent. I don't know if you intend to leave it vacant, so how would that be part of the definition? I feel like that, we're trying to say like, if you're in the process of selling it, like, we don't need to be hammering on someone that's got their house on the market. But intend, intended to be left vacant, how is that legally, what is that as a legal threshold? I should probably leave this to that abundance of lawyers at the table, but.
That was exactly my question.
Sounds pretty vague to me.
Intent is, in a lot of things, is always an issue, so.
So I think maybe we need to specify like not for, you know, that, even if it is for sale, like, you know, with the house that, you know, Ms. Lupi and her neighbors have brought, it's been on the sale or on the market multiple times, right? But if it's on the market for two years, you're not really trying in earnest to sell it. Maybe we need to find a timeframe whereby, you know, it would be triggered to be a vacant house if it's not, they're not trying to move it in earnest, or maybe we need to find that.
Well, this was kind of meant to leave some wiggle room for the person who maybe has to go into assisted care facility for a short term. You know, they didn't intend to leave it vacant, but they had their foot surgery and now they've got to end up in an assisted care facility for three months? They didn't intend to do that, but that, and it was really meant to leave that wiggle room and for some interpretation on our side if this was not one of the properties that we meant to register, I guess.
Yeah, I appreciate, I think we need to capture that intent in the ordinance. I just, I think this is a little bit too vague, especially if there's, you know, the concern about, all right, if we're going to, if this is going to give us license to go onto a private property, whether or not it's vacant, it should be pretty exactly clear what those circumstances are where we can go look in that backyard, right?
Most of those things that we're going to see are things that we would see if the neighbor called me and said, hey, take a look over my fence, my neighbor.
Like everything else?
Yeah, yeah, refuses to cut their grass or refuses to paint their shed. It's very much the same things that we see. Well, when we do a rental inspection, it's the, it's the same things we would see.
And then my other question is, Commissioner Levaser got to it a bit, like, that this is helping try to. like, that this is helping, trying, the problem that we're trying to address here is giving us a little bit more leverage over problem houses that are becoming a nuisance in the neighborhood. I, I think that should remain our intent. I'm less concerned with property managers and whether or not this bothers them. I want to make sure that residents in the neighborhood feel like this ordinance is being built for them, and that it is be, is effective. I don't want to go through all this if we're not actually going to have any, any more leverage to solve these problems than we do right now.
Yeah, the, the, the hard part with ordinance design is, is that ordinances are hammers, right? They're not scalpels. They, they, they hit hard and hit this big area. They, they don't laser in on the one house that you don't like, because we, we can't write regulations like that, but this is, this is what the intent is, yes.
Yeah, and so, I, and I feel like it, I feel like we're on the right track here. I think it needs more scrutiny before it's ready, uh, to be moved on to second reading. And I, I don't have the suggested fixes right now, because it's late and I'm dehydrated. Because it's very hot in here.
I thought it was getting an infection.
So, so those are my thoughts on it right now. But I definitely, I would like time to actually come up with some more thoughts and suggestions to make sure we're getting, uh, where we want to go with this.
So I don't have a lot more to say, because I was going to talk about, Commissioner Lassiter was worried this is maybe too strongly worded. And I thought it was too weakly worded, because, worded, because I think property that is not intended to be left vacant could apply to any property. I mean, all we have to do is ask the owner, "Do you intend to leave it vacant?" And they say, "No." And then...
I've been trying to get some board approvals.
Totally, I want to do this. So I think the property that's not intended to be left vacant needs some, um, wordsmithing to make it, to make it do what we want it to do. I do understand the idea of wanting some flexibility. I just think that it's, it's too much flexibility.
You've wrapped up the essence of my concerns as code enforcement, because some people think I'm too hard, and some people think I'm too soft, on exactly the same issue.
Exactly.
Commissioner Perush, I think.
I agree that I think this needs some, some more thought and work before we move forward with it. And I'm basing that just on the experiences that I've had with vacant properties just in our immediate neighborhood. Not all at the same time. One, uh, was a house right around the corner that, um, was found to be operating a prescription mill. This was fifteen years or so ago. Uh, it was investigated by DEA. They moved in, they, they seized the house, arrested everybody that was inside, emptied it out, complete, you know, and then it, it was a forfeiture. It went through a very lengthy process, adjudication process through the federal government. Uh, the house sat there, um, didn't become totally deteriorated, but there were issues. I don't know how we would handle a situation like that, requiring DEA to point a responsible party. I don't know. That's one of the things that I think it doesn't happen all the time. But it, that's one instance. Another instance in, in, uh, my neighborhood was an estate issue. Um, uh, the owner died. Uh, the heirs were fighting over the house. There were no other assets, to our knowledge, in the estate itself, which is why they were fighting over the house. Um, and it deteriorated to the point where code enforcement was involved. But there again, do you require the estate administrator to find a responsible party? Does, do they become the responsible party? And of course, with no other assets in the estate, can you, we, there would be nothing to pay an administrator or a responsible party. So I, and I think that probably happens more than we imagine, those things happen. In fact, the, my third example was another estate issue, uh, where an elderly gentleman, um, moved down to Florida, which is where all the children lived. Uh, the house was vacant. He was down there long enough so that his estate was probated when he finally died, through the probate system in Florida. So you don't even have a Michigan probate court that would be involved. You have a Florida probate court, which is, you know, that's another world down there. It's, it, we think ours is complicated, it's nothing compared to Florida's. So, and those are the three vacant houses that I'm aware of that were in our neighborhood. So my guess is that we're not in a, we're not in a community, like a distressed community, or a blighted community, where people are just walking away from their houses. They can't pay their taxes, they can't pay their mortgage, they're just walking away. That doesn't happen in Royal Oak. I mean, we have one hundred, two hundred, three hundred, four hundred, a hundred thousand-dollar houses. People just don't walk away from them and leave them vacant, like they do in blighted communities. There's always some problem. There's always some trigger that causes the house to become vacant a lot, in most instances, that people have absolutely no control over. So my guess is that if we were to put this into place, we would be accepting just about everybody, because everybody would be in circumstances just like what we've just described, or Commissioner Lassiter has described, where, yeah, you, you really didn't intend to leave it vacant, you're in some kind of situation. My guess is that ninety-five percent of the vacant houses in Royal Oak are because of some situation. And even the house on Verona Circle, that's a, that's an aberrant situation that got caught up in multiple ownerships, and, you know, people not taking responsibility and letting other people know what was going on. That's an aberration, that doesn't happen hardly at all. So, um, I, I, I guess there's no harm in approving this, once we fine-tune the language a little bit. My guess, though, is that you're not going to have the ability to operate as much as you think you do with the situations that we're going to be giving exceptions for.
Commissioner Douglas?
I kind of like the responsible party provision. I see the, the, it needs tweaking, um, but I do like that idea. And the truth is, I'd like to see if we could apply it to commercial properties. Can I, I can think of a number of occasions where we had commercial properties that had been boarded up for years, and nobody knew who to call to complain to about the graffiti on the boarding, or whatever. But the uncertainty that bothers me is the uncertainty of, how do we know when a building is vacant? And if we're going to start to, to charge fines, how do we know when it went vacant? And the penalties, I mean, a year of penalties at a dollar a day is three hundred and sixty-five dollars. I mean, you know, there's plenty of people who would be just happy to eat that and sit on their property. So, I mean, unless we can put some teeth into those provisions, and I'm not sure we can, um, I'm just, I'm not kind of, uh, willing to, um, to support this in its present form.
Mr. Gibbs?
I, I, something that raises a concern as well is, um, people who winter in Florida, Arizona, Southern California, if they're lucky. Now, on my street, there's several people that do, several seniors that do that. Most, all the houses that I know of have children that come by and check on the house, plow the snow, do whatever. But would those people be registering the house as vacant? Because that doesn't, truly, nobody's living there. But I, 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 I just want to make sure that the right parties are getting dinged, and the wrong parties are not getting dinged.
That's speci, that's specifically mentioned in the ordinance, if somebody's on vacation, that that's, that that would not meet our threshold.
But if you're wintering in...
It's vacation, I guess, is...
You know, Tucson, then...
Maybe I'm too liberal with the term, but I think that's vacation.
Okay, okay.
And I think here...
I would consider that a vacation.
Okay.
What we're really trying to get at, I mean, we've illustrated it with the property on Verona Circle, but, um, certainly there are issues that lead to vacant houses that, you know, are understandable. I think for me, you know, the first carve-out, is it a homestead property or not? You know, if it's a non-homestead property, a property that was acquired, or purchased, or bequeathed as part of a bigger scheme, LLC, somebody trying to flip it, make money, et cetera. You know, to me, that's what we're really trying to carve out. And I think it's understandable if something goes through, you know, probate, or whatever, that, you know, we give a reasonable period of time. I also think, too, when I look at the thirty days, we're not really trying, I mean, nobody cares about a house being vacant for thirty days. They care more about homes that are vacant for ten years, right? So I think that's something I'd like to look at. You know, maybe it's a hundred and eighty days, and that covers all of the normal circumstances that would be, you know, whether it's an estate issue, uh, whether somebody's trying, you know, they moved to another part of the country, and they need to sell their house. Um, they get a work assignment somewhere. Um, I think we need to strengthen the language on intended, because I think I see it on both ends. One, it can cover everything, and it can cover nothing. But I, I think that, I'd like to see what this would look like. And I'm sorry, um, Mr. Craig, I turn around and face you with respect, but...
It's okay, I can hear you, fine.
It's a challenge for me to, to move. So, um, I think there's some opportunity here to really address some of the potential bad actors, because I think what we have is, we have some nuisances, and then we just have situations like we have in Verona Circle that perpetuate. And it's not, they're not the only ones. I mean, we, that happens to be the one that has the most action on it. But I, I think the idea of getting property registered, especially if you're not the homestead owner, if you're a corporation or whatever, understanding who owns that property. I mean, there's a whole myriad of reasons why we'd want to get in contact with that person, like, "Hey, your house is on fire." Um, or, "You know what? Your grass is too long, and, you know, we need to send the bill somewhere." Uh, and we've actually had issues where, you know, landlords and, and other folks get upset because they're, "Hey, I didn't get the bill, I, how did you not know?" So I think that's a good process. It's not going to solve everything, but I think that we are aware of an issue. Uh, this issue isn't going to be unique. And yeah, people, I agree with Commissioner Perush. You know, people aren't just going to walk away from, you know, a hundred thousand-dollar, two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand-dollar home. But, you know, there could be a downturn in the economy, and then we're reacting. And I think that, you know, we will have a lot of bank-owned homes and things like that, you know, from time to time, if there's an economic issue. And we need to understand who to send the bill to, and what to do, and how to get, you know, remedy to these situations. So, um, I don't see a problem with getting a responsible party. I think thirty days might be a little tight, because there's so many things that could happen, I think, looking at that. Uh, and then also, I mean, list it. What are the reasons why, you know, if someone came in front of this commission and said, "Hey, you know, this ordinance is affecting me, but I have this issue, I'm on vacation. It's in probate." You know, um, what, I'm in the hospital, you know, whatever it may be, whatever those, those things that, um, you know, a normal, reasonable human being would be like, "Oh yeah, no problem." Uh, maybe they don't have reasonable neighbors, but, you know, at least the commission as a whole, and the community as a whole could say, "Yep, yep." It's a, you know, you don't have to register it as a vacant house, you're in rehabilitation for a year, or whatever. Understood. You have the doctors, no, good." And give some discretion, you know, in that regard. But, um, and I think that's what Mr. Craig's trying to do, but maybe we get a little bit more specific on those elements that could, you know, that we would say, "This is not right." Just my two cents. We gave you lots of feedback. Mr. Gillum?
Just one follow-up comment to, um, one of Commissioner Douglas's points. This is an amendment to the existing property maintenance code, additional, of additional language to it. The dollar a day, that's, um, the fee for the registration itself. In addition to that, we do have other penalties that are in the ordinance already. It's a graduated scale. It starts with a civil infraction for the first three offenses. It's not included in, in the ordinance, because it's part of the existing ordinance itself.
Okay.
So, um, and that part wouldn't change. So there are some, there are penalties above and beyond the registration fees that are contained in the body of the amendment that you have in front of you tonight.
Oh, good, thank you.
The dollar a day is part of the current rental ordinance. That's, that's where it comes from right now, is if, if somebody doesn't renew their rental or, or establish their rental license when they should, then they, they start occurring a dollar a day fee on top of their registration fee.
Good, okay, thanks, that helps.
Actually, with some rentals, it's a dollar a day per unit. So we've, I, I've collected some very big fees on some properties that just refuse to license. Can't explain why.
So, I don't see a motion to, to move forward with this on first reading. I do see some feedback that have been given to staff. Does staff feel comfortable that you have enough to think about and see maybe what modifications are possible? I mean, I'm sure you can always come into roadblocks conflicting, you know, testimonies, et cetera. But do you feel like this is something that you can work on again? Or are you looking for some sort of official direction to move forward with it, kill it? And what's your...
Well, my thought at this time would be for Mr. Craig and I to do some more work on the ordinance, based upon the comments that we received from the commission tonight, and then potentially bring it back to you at a later date. The only thing I would add in the meantime, if there are additional thoughts, or after you've had a chance to get some sleep, or get some water, or something like that. If you, if you have other thoughts, go ahead and feel free to email them to me. And Jason, we can try to incorporate those into the other work that we're doing, so...
Okay. Good.
A question. Would you, if we, so there are two parts of this. Part of this is rentals, and the other part is vacant properties. And I can see that you've made some changes that would be beneficial to our resi, our rental, um, controls, even if we don't go forward with the vacant property issues. Would you still want to do that? I mean, for example, the responsible party thing applies to rentals as well.
Yeah, I, I would want to make all the modifications, with the exception of the vacant property. If, if, if it was the desire of the commission not move forward with any, anything with the vacant property, I would still want the other, because it, it gets into, we have a confusing thing that says your, your license is good for two years. Well, we can't have a license expiring literally every day. So we, we expire them in batches. We have January even and odd, July even and odd. So depending on when people come in, we will be moving them forward. So they're going to gain some portion of months, whether it's one month or five. And then they're going to be put on that cycle. And then they will expire. But that's not what the ordinance says. So it's, it's very difficult to do exactly what the ordinance says, because then I would have licenses expiring every single day.
Yeah.
And so we're trying to just clean up what we're doing to, to meet our practice.
Okay. Thanks.
Commissioner Macy?
I would, in theory, be fine with doing what Commissioner Douglas and Mr. Craig are suggesting we should do with this. But I, I feel a little uncomfortable, especially at midnight, going through this ordinance, and with an eye to, these things will stay in, these things will stay out, in terms of the changes. I would love if just, just that one changes can come back to intent, or is that what you meant?
Well, I think she was asking if, if we're not going to do the vacant property, would I still bring the other rental portion forward? And I would.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Commissioner Lassiter, you had your hand up?
Yeah. What, what may be valuable here is to add some additional language to find the, the abatement remedies, uh, through circuit court. Uh, there was a couple, uh, Minne, Michigan Municipal League has, on their website, uh, links to, uh, the ordinance of, of other cities. Ones I found particularly interesting were those of Farmington and Ann Arbor. And I can certainly share with Mr. Gillum what, what I found there.
All right. We'll move on to item number fourteen on the agenda, which is the reoccupancy ordinance, first reading.
Okay, uh, try and breathe a little life back into this, as, uh, as I know it's been talked about quite extensively already. But, um, so you're, you're being asked to approve a reoccupancy ordinance on first reading. The, the information on this has been less than accurate. So I'll try and dispel a lot of what I heard, uh, at, at public comment. So, number one, the inspection is going to be directly involved with the application for the resale. I can't just go and, and inspect any house, anywhere, anytime. I, I have no desire to do that, I don't want to do that. Uh, another one is that the, the only provisions that are being added are, is the first section. Uh, it's one, I'm sorry, one, two, three, and four, um, which is all underlined. The rest of the nine pages that are provided are already part of the ordinance, they're just being renumbered. So that's why you have nine pages for something that's roughly two, two, three paragraphs. This, this would not require anybody to, to bring their property up to code. I can't require somebody to bring their property up to current code, just because they're selling it. Uh, what it will do is it'll provide a vehicle for us to inspect the property, identify if any work has been done recently without permits, and require those permits. Specifically, I, I'm looking at the safety issues of furnaces, hot water heaters, air conditioners, structural modifications. Those inspections could be performed fairly quickly. And, and we would be able to, to identify those issues very, very quickly, because we have iPads out in the field, so we can see live versions of, of permit data. And we would just give the owner an opportunity to, to obtain the proper permit. It, about that permit, it is not about collecting the fee for that permit, although by, by ordinance and law, they do have to pay for it. The purpose of it is, is to get the inspection done, to make sure that the work that is performed is safe. And I, I, I can speak specifically to one instance that I had, where, uh, a, a property was sold, it had two realtors involved, a title company and a private home inspector. The property listing said newly remodeled. It, it came to me... It, it came to me through the assessing office. They, the assessing office caught the sale, turned it on to us and said, this property doesn't have any permits, newly remodeled. So when we contacted the owner, who was the new owner, they were astounded that there were no permits or inspections on the property. Upon doing an inspection, we found that the kitchen was not wired properly. Nothing was fire stopped. They had to open that up. They, how they got it covered through the previous owner, I don't know. But, um, that's, that's just an instance of what can happen when work is done without permits. And a- all we're really looking to do is, is go after the safety of it. And I, and I recognize that your average homeowner is not going to see the benefit of me doing this. They're also not going to see the benefit of me inspecting their furnace when, you know, some company does it. They're not going to see the benefit of me inspecting their electrical panel when it does it because what we're doing is we're identifying the issues before they become a problem. We're correcting them before there's a fire, before somebody gets hurt. So you don't always see the benefit of that. And, uh, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions I can on the ordinance.
Questions to Mr. Craig. Commissioner Macy?
So other than the situation you described where something really egregious has happened and newly remodeled, and in fact, they didn't, they didn't do, pull any permits at all. Is there another purpose to this? So you're talking about this dangerous case where there's been some remodeling without any, um, I don't, I, I'm just, I don't know how frequently that happens. This just seems like a really big thing to do, a really big, to use the word off the stage tonight, overreach for a very minor and rare problem. I mean, not minor, but you.
At any time, I'm dealing with five to ten of these. At, at any time throughout the year, I'm dealing with five to ten of these. They, they take an enormous amount of staff time because now, now not every time is it the new owner. Sometimes I catch the listing when it goes up. Uh, we catch the listing that goes up. We identify who the current owner is. I'm, of course, told I'm killing a sale, which doesn't make me feel bad at all because they are the ones who renovated the property without any permits. We, we make them get those permits. A lot of times they have to find different people because the people who they used were not licensed. They, we have to go in and identify the work. It, it's, it's very time consuming. So this would be to alleviate that.
Okay.
We would go in, we would document and identify and go.
So now I feel the opposite. So you, you already know how to find these. You already are finding these.
I'm finding a portion of them, a very small portion of them.
And what's the, what's the teeth when you do now?
They have to pull the proper permits. We're not trying, we're not trying to punish or write, which is, any time work is done without a permit, it's a misdemeanor offense. We don't write a misdemeanor offense unless we have to. We just want the permit done. We want to get it inspected and make sure it's safe. We don't want anybody to be hurt by a improperly installed hot water heater or furnace or electrical panel.
Mr. Craig?
Yes?
If I wanted to look at all of my permits that were pulled, let's say on my home, could I go online now and look at that by property?
Yes, you could.
I wouldn't be able to see the absence of permits, right? You'd only see the confirmation of permits. So if I were buying a house, I could go and pull the history on it if I were so inclined to see what permits I'd pulled and which ones had.
Yes. That, that is a, a flag to somebody when it says newly remodeled and they look, go online and don't see any permits.
Yeah. That would be a red flag to me. Like, how'd you get this new furnace?
Right. Or they could call our office. We'll answer those questions very quickly.
Commissioner Dubois?
So is that not something that home inspectors do?
I can't speak for home inspectors. Um, I can tell you they're not, they're not regulated. I'm not saying that they're not good people or doing a job, but they're not regulated. There's no registration to be a home inspector. There's no list of qualifications you have to have to be a home inspector. On the, on the converse side of that, building inspectors, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, we are all registered with the state. We've met a threshold of qualifications. We have continuing education that, that we proceed with on code knowledge. I, I, well, I can tell you again, the ones that I'm dealing with have all had inspectors go through. And this was not something that they've identified i- in, in these instances. I couldn't tell you of the ones that were identified because those don't come to me as a problem. The, the home inspector catches it and says, you got to get permits for this because there aren't any. Those aren't things that would rise to my level of attention.
But that does happen.
I, I have to assume it does. I have to assume that some are catching it. And I have had realtors call me and say, hey, we looked at this house. It says newly remodeled and I know they didn't pull a permit. I'm telling my buyers to walk, but the next buyer coming along might not be as lucky. We go out there, we identify the problem, we get it corrected. I've had that happen.
So, but it seems to me, like, I understand the problem you're trying to solve. And I think there was a lot of misunderstanding about what you're trying to solve. I think there's a reason for permitting and, and standards and that is about safety. It's about the quality of our housing stock, the desirability of our housing stock and the safety of residents. But if the information's already available, so it's publicly available whether or not permits were pulled. So it feels like, isn't there a way just through, like, education and awareness, working with our very active network of realtors here in the city to make sure that that gets looked at as opposed to starting with what, what feels really heavy to solve a problem that maybe is solvable in a much lighter way?
I, I hesitate to disparage anybody, but this active group is not participating in this right now. Um, again, on, on every one of these transactions that I've dealt with, there are two realtors involved. But there's a loophole in that because a title company gets the owner to sign a piece of paper that says, it's called an owner's disclosure, says, I swear I didn't do any work that requires a permit. And everybody feels like that makes it, it all okay.
But so someone's already breaking the law in that scenario?
Yes.
Is there, is there no accountability there?
Well, again, that's, on my end, there is not. No, I, I can't.
It's a civil matter.
That's, I, I, that's between a title, I don't know what the title company rules are or what enforcing agency they, they respond to. What I can tell you is, is that I have come across many instances that are, that, that these things are not being taken care of and they're not being watched. If, if this was to be taken care of on first reading, I'd be happy to sit down with the real estate community and get their input on a second reading or what could be done to help any, alleviate any of the things that they see as burdens or roadblocks to this. This would incorporate into my normal inspection process, which is, we're out the next business day. You call and you schedule your inspection, we're out the next business day. That would be my goal with this. I, I can't see how it would go more than another day. The fee that I would propose, and there's no fees as part of this, that would be a separate resolution. I would propose a fifty dollar fee. I'm not trying to, the money grab that, that people have implied. I'm really trying to keep it as, to where we are getting in, we are identifying the issues and we're getting them resolved. And this would not affect the person who's been in that house for twenty-five years and hasn't done anything. That, that's, that person's not affected.
I understand, I understand your intent. I just, I feel like, given the information that's available, there's a way to get there. And I, I appreciate that there's, calling it a money grab and also a tremendous drain on resources, which we heard a lot of both of those things tonight. It can't be both of those things. It can either be a money grab or a drain on resources or a wash, right, which would be ideal. But the question is, is it necessary? So is the problem we're solving generating the level of public benefit that necessitate an ordinance like this? Or are we, are there other things we can think of that get where you want to go, which I totally understand?
Getting where I'm going right now is extremely time consuming.
Right.
I'm, I'm catching many of them after the fact. The work's already been done. They've gotten away with so many already, when, in the instance of flippers or, or investors. They've gotten away with so many already, they don't care about the next one. And, and they kind of take the attitude of, if you catch me on one and I get away with ten, I'm ahead of the game. Uh, one that I found, a, a person that I found, I was able to run their name through SOS, or I'm sorry, not through SOS, through Oakland County. And I saw another eight properties that they had. We went back through those and we saw where they purchased them for a hundred and fifty thousand, they sold them for two hundred and forty. So we're, we're in the process of trying to get those properties taken care of. Some of these properties were sold two years ago. But I have a responsibility to make sure that that current owner knows that there's probably been work done to their home without any permits or inspections. Nobody who was involved in their process did that for them. That's what I'm trying to do for them.
Mr. Craig, we, we heard the, um, point that we would be the only community in Oakland County to have such a provision. Um, are you aware of what other cities are doing? Because I know in Ferndale, Hazel Park, Madison Heights, Oak Park, you know, you have folks that are buying homes and flipping them. And I'm sure they're not pulling permits in every case. Are they actively, you know, searching the web for, you know, newly remodeled listings and doing the same approach? Or are they just laissez-faire? In your experience, what, what's happening in these other Oakland County communities?
I, I'm not sure what's happening in other Oakland County communities. I can tell you this can't be a unique thing because I get several calls a month asking if we do resale inspections from title companies or from banks. They're calling and asking if we do resale inspections. They ask if we have vacant property registrations. They, because they, they own property that, um, that, you know, is vacant and they're working with it. So I, I get those calls. I cannot tell you what other communities do. I, I try to focus on Royal Oak and our issues and our problems. I, I, I don't know, maybe they have, maybe they don't have the workload, uh, that we have and they have more time to drive around and watch people pulling bathtubs out of houses or, um, they may have some other provision for, for catching these. I, I can tell you that Royal Oak is a high-demand area. Everybody wants to be here and everybody wants to make a dollar on something. And people are taking advantage of that.
Commissioner, Mr. Gillum?
If I could just weigh in for a second, Commissioners. The discussion we had about the vacant property ordinance, that dealt specifically with residential properties. And just so everybody is clear, the way this ordinance is written and the discussions that Mr. Craig and I have had over the years about this issue, this would apply not only to residential properties, but also to commercial properties as well. It could be restricted to residential properties if we wanted to do that. But the idea with commercial properties is, I think it's still the same, and Jason, correct me or jump in here at any point, but it's still to, to make sure that the property is safe in the sense that for the commercial properties, what the code enforcement staff and the building department staff finds is, it's not uncommon for there to have been a change in use of property. So a piece of property will be designated and would have been approved for one kind of use in the past. And the building department finds out that that use has changed. And depending upon the type of use for the property, the code requirements are different. So by changing the use without pulling the appropriate permits, what had been a safe commercial property before is possibly or more likely not a safe commercial property anymore.
That, that's correct. I, um, I can speak specifically to a couple of instances. One where a warehouse, um, for storing furniture, that was fine. It was approved for storing furniture. The moving company decided they didn't want to store furniture anymore. They leased it out to a tire company and the tire company came in, they stacked tires from floor to ceiling, made very narrow paths to get through. It was a tremendous fire hazard. That was one we cut. There were, there were a couple up on, uh, Delamere that had, uh, it won, one, I think was a, I think one was a mechanical contractor at one point. And then, uh, it had turned into a marijuana grow facility. They decided they were gonna, gonna grow marijuana there. They had added, I think it was six four-hundred amp electrical panels. They had added, uh, like six air conditioners, um, six air handlers. They were, they had built walls in there. These are things that we catch when we have these reoccupancies. We know who's there and who's supposed to be there and when somebody else is, is, is there now is when we would have to. It, or, you know, the, if we have an instance where the building landlord knows that somebody else moved in, but they might not know what they're doing, we're making sure that the use is appropriate and, uh, and complies with our ordinances and that they haven't modified the building in a way that would make it illegal.
Commissioner Perush?
I understand the problems that you've described this evening and I, and I think they're real and I think they're significant. The problem I have is with the process, is that we are all now just now learning how significant the problems are that you've been facing. And the community is just learning about them. And this isn't a problem, at least it's been on my radar. I don't think it's been on anyone's radar. It wasn't part of our goal-setting session. It wasn't part of any problem-solving session that we've had any kind of discussions about at all. And, and, but yet we have this ordinance in front of us. So what we've done by doing the process this way is we've turned off all the realtors. We've turned off every homeowner that's taken a look at this because they think that there's going to be some infection for, inspection force invading their homes when they put them on the market. Tremendous, tremendous misunderstanding that we're going to have to overcome in order to justify anything like this. So my suggestion would be to take a big step back and say, all right, now we recognize there's a problem. Given the economic conditions in the city and given the fact that we've got a lot of houses turning over, a lot of flipping activity, it's significantly damaging the quality of the homes in our community and that's going to hurt all of us in the long run. So let's all figure out what the best solution is. And to pull the people like the realtor community back in and say to them, this is a significant issue. This is a significant issue that we are determined to solve. The, if worse comes to worse, this is what it's going to be. But let's see if perhaps collectively, we can't come some, come up with something that's not quite as harsh as this is and maybe come up with a solution that everyone else can buy into. Because right now, if we approve this, no one is going to buy into it. The realtors are going to hate it, the community is going to hate it, and it's going to be terrible. And it's not going to work the way you want it to work. But I, I think if we step back and say, we are recognizing a problem and perhaps you can quantify it a little bit more for us. How many times you see this happening? Give us some of your best examples as to what is happening in the community, both residentially and commercially. And give us examples of what is happening in your neighborhood. Look at these houses and what potential harm is happening to these houses. What's it going to do to your property values? Then at that point, we can say, okay, then what is the best solution? We may come back to this and say, you know, this or some part of this is what we really need. Or maybe it's some part of this, but we only inspect for those safety things. We don't go in there broad brush. We're just going to look at the electrical panel, on the water heater and the furnace or whatever. But it, to proceed with this now, given the way the process is unfolded, it's going to be a disaster. So that's my suggestion.
Well, maybe on that same vein, it's not necessarily that we have a inspection problem. We have a issue with people clearly breaking the law and doing work without pulling the proper permits, putting their fellow residents and new occupants at risk. And I think we all agree with that. So the question is, is do you go and you do a hundred percent check on every property? Or alternatively, you know, in my mind, things I'd like to explore, based on what Commissioner Perush is saying, you know, how do you, you know, hold the SCOFF laws accountable? How do you make the penalty and hammer stronger if you, um, do work without a permit intentionally? As opposed to trying to manage every transaction, when you do catch somebody, you know, you, you have a, you have a, a measure so strong that it prevents others from, you know, circumventing the system and putting our residents at risk. And that way you don't, you know, inhibit or impact anyone other than the SCOFF law. Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, I, I will say I'm somewhat more favorably disposed towards the, uh, requirements in here for commercial inspections. This is a subject that, for example, the planning department, community development department has brought up in the past. And because you have that added layer of zoning and the different uses that are allowed in different forms or different zoning classifications, and that's different than all residential. So, but I would say similarly, we want to bring the business community in on this. We want to bring in landlords and the Chamber of Commerce to weigh in on that subject as well. But otherwise, yes, I absolutely think we need to take a step back from this. Um, I, somebody said involve the realtors. I think we should ask them to give us their experiences. They operate all over the state. They're going to have a broader perspective, um, that perhaps we can take advantage of.
Commissioner Dubois?
Yeah, I, I think the best next step would be, as Commissioner Perush said, to quantify the problem. So maybe take six months to actually generate a report, like how many of these instances are, are coming up? You know, uh, what is the extent of, of the problem? Are you seeing repeat offenders doing the work and flipping it? Because maybe we can just address it by going to the source, like where the folks doing this? As opposed to putting the burden on a homeowner who's just trying to sell their, you know, sell their property. So I think more information to quantify the problem would give us more perspective on what the proper answer is. Um, but I think it's an important conversation to have. So, um, you know, I would move that, that you generate a report six months from now. So, you know, I would move that you generate a report six months from now, quantifying the number of issues that have come up to your office, you know, relevant to homes being sold and then the homeowner finding out that it's unsafe. Not just, not just they didn't get it signed off, but it's actually, you know, unsafe.
We have a motion by Commissioner Dubat. And by Commissioner Perusch.
What's the motion?
Discussion?
What is the motion?
Let me ask you what the motion is.
Yeah, I don't know what the motion is.
For Mr. Craig to bring us a report in six months, quantifying six months' worth of how often has this problem arisen, right? And if in the context of that, you know, there's 5,000 home sales and there's five instances of this, and say he's only capturing 20% of it. And so that's, you know, sorry, I forgot, I lost my math train. But we can get a sensitive extent of the problem to find out if this is an appropriate solution or if just communication and awareness and making sure that potential buyers are aware of the tools available to them is the right way to go. But I think quantifying the problem by having Mr. Craig, like not just anecdotally tell us how much he's seeing of this, but actually quantify, address what they found and what resolution was.
If I can, I'm sorry, if I can interject just one thing. So last time this came before the commission was, I think, 2010. It was referred to a committee because there was opposition from the public about it. So it was referred to a committee. That committee never really addressed it because we sat down and when I explained it, they kind of went, oh, that's what you're trying to do? Yeah, we don't care. And then Stormwater took over that committee and then that committee turned into something else. So that was, that was once upon a time referred to a committee. Is there a chance that you would want to do that again? Because it is, this is my way of getting an audience with this group, you know? It's, we don't do work sessions. We rarely do that. So this is my opportunity to bring things to this.
Well, from my, from my perspective, the motion I'm making is, I don't want to see any formal action or motion or direction on this until we have a full understanding as a commission of the scope of the problem that we're actually trying to solve. So I would really like to see some more, like, concrete information from you so that we can, we can get a better idea of what it is that we're looking at and what's an appropriate response.
My challenge there is, is how do I identify these without the opportunity to do an inspection on the sale?
Well, you had said, the reason you raised this is because at any given time, you're dealing with five to 10.
Right.
I just want to see a record of that, how they're being brought to your attention, what the issues are that are being raised to you, and, you know, maybe what's the perspective of the home? Is it someone that's in the home? Is it somehow it was raised to you before it was sold? I just, I want to know how residents are being impacted so we know what the real community benefit is of acting on this and are we creating more problems than we're solving? And that I have to do too.
But you understand, it's not going to be an accurate inclusive list because...
I understand that you go...
I just want to know what you know.
Okay. So it's not a scientific study. It's a study of everything that comes across your desk.
It's not a problem.
Right. Discussion, Keshav Vassar and Commissioner Gibbs.
Yeah, I would just think in terms of, you know, perhaps the way to address this is making more information available to buyers who, from my understanding, and just, you know, so people know where I come from, I've worked in the real estate industry for about 25 years as a broker, real estate attorney, that sort of thing. I've seen a lot of situations. I've seen a lot of problems with ordinances like this where there's been significant delays. And I know your intention is that there wouldn't be a delay, but that's certainly a concern that buyers and sellers would have, is that this would slow down their process. But I'm wondering if we may be able to work with the private inspectors, make them aware of where the information is or how they can get information, what permits have been pulled on the property. And they could incorporate that into their report that they give the buyers and that adds value to what they do. It makes the buyers more informed and it may help resolve some of these concerns.
Most home inspectors, in my understanding of it, the home inspectors get contact with the purchasers through the real estate agents.
Yes.
So, and the real estate agents are licensed individuals. They're licensed through the state of Michigan to advocate for their clients. So it might be, and that's an easier group to get a hold of because they have an association. They have, the realtors are a much easier group to get a hold of than the inspectors. I wouldn't know how to get a hold of private home inspectors. There's no association form that I'm aware of and no registration or...
Yeah, and I think you've nailed it. I mean, you get there through the real estate agents themselves. The agents who are serving the buyers in these instances, in most instances, they're going to make a recommendation or give a handful of recommendations to their buyers and the buyers are in most instances going to pick from those people.
Ethical ones will.
Well, in most instances, the buyer's going to pick from those that are recommended by their realtors. And that's certainly, I mean, you could sell it to them, say, hey, there's value for your client, the buyer, because we're going to make it easy to get information that can be shared with that buyer. And that, you know, you do that without an inspection, you do it without...
Commissioner Vassar? There's a motion on the table. I just want to, I know it's getting late, but I think, I think these are all good ideas you're bringing up and I have a similar vein of thought, you know, working with the associations and making sure that, you know, what is that right point to make sure buyers are best informed of what they're getting into so they have the proper resolve and, you know, snuff out these bad actors. And I think that might be, you know, in this look, you know, some suggestions we would want to see other than a reoccupancy ordinance. So is there any comments regarding the motion on the table? Sorry, I'm not trying to...
I'll cut it off and nothing further.
Okay. I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. And those opposed, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Craig.
Thank you.
May I just clarify for the record that we did not just vote on this ordinance?
Yes. To the press, we did not vote on this ordinance.
We did not vote on this ordinance. This ordinance is going to go dormant until we have some information.
Good clarification.
This brings us to requests from Meyer to use city logo. Is this Mr. Johnson?
I'll take this one. Meyer has requested permission to use the city's trademarked logo on the wall of their new store, their inside wall of the Woodward Corner Market located in the Woodward Corners by Beaumont Project at 13 in Woodward. This store follows a different concept for Meyer and it'll be just the second such store to open. The first one is in Grand Rapids and it uses a local logo that, I'm not sure if it's actually Grand Rapids' logo or whose it is, but it's the West Side logo that they use in what they call Bridge Street Market. There's a picture of it in the report. The city logo is trademarked and we have taken action to protect against unauthorized use before. I think Dave has issued cease and desist letters three times?
Several times, yes.
Several times? In those cases, it was always against entities that just started using the city logo in some manner without ever asking permission. This is the first one that came to us first and asked. Your options are to just say no, there's a resolution there if you want to do that. There's also a resolution there if you want to say yes, in which case we think there should be an agreement that spells out exactly how it will be used and the terms for its use. If you're going to take that approach, we'd also like to hear from you as to what the terms for its use ought to be. Are we going to be looking for compensation or perhaps a donation to, you know, the new Civic?
Civic Foundation.
Foundation or some community activity, whatever that might be.
Other things and stuff?
I'm waiting for him to say the word parks. Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Johnson, it seems like we had a massive interruption of your content.
Not really. Basically, I'm just asking you, one, do you want to consider letting them do it? And if we are going to let them do it, what do we want in return?
Commissioner Perusch.
Because it's 12:30, I'm going to make a motion that we deny the request from Meyer. And I can explain my reason really quickly.
Motion by Commissioner Perusch. We have a second by Commissioner Macy. Okay.
I just think it's opening a can of worms that we're going to be regretting down the road. I mean, Meyer is wonderful. I love the corporation. They have a great store. You know, if we wanted to put it on any type of user in the community, they would be the perfect one. But it's just going to open the door to a number of other people who are going to want to use the logo. And then we're going to be deciding, is this an appropriate use? Is this not an appropriate use? I mean, even if we say, you know, you have to donate $5,000 to the animal shelter or to wherever, you know, that's not going to be a prohibition for some people who, that's not going to be a barrier for some people that we really don't want displaying our logo. And then it becomes discretionary on our part and I just think it opens an enormous can of worms. There's a number of other businesses in the community that have, with very creative design, gotten very close to our logo without going over the edge and borrowing it completely. And I can think of a couple off the top of my head who shall remain nameless. So if they want to kind of get close to our logo, I think there's a way that they possibly can. But to actually give them actively permission to use it, we're going to be fine with Meyer and we might be fine with the next 10 people that come in the door. But number 11, we're going to go, oh, my gosh. And I just, I just don't think we need to go there.
Commissioner Macy.
100% agree with that. And I was going to say, rather than do some variation of our logo, it'd be great if they went to make a Woodward Corners logo and use that. Suggestion.
Commissioner Douglas.
I think we should have licensing guidelines in place. I would like to see people doing, you know, imprints, T-shirts, tote bags, whatever, in a way that generates revenue for the city and gets our brand out there. And, I mean, so I will support your motion, but I might follow it up with another motion, you know, directing the staff to prepare those guidelines. Or we might want to discuss it at some other time because I do want to see that logo get out there.
Yeah.
Commissioner Gibbs.
I, I agree with Commissioner Mayor Protem Douglas's licensing guidelines, maybe coming up with some of that. Unfortunately, at 12:30 at night on a Monday, I'm brain dead and I haven't had caffeine in three weeks and it's really hitting me right now. Sorry. But I think creating some guidelines and that licensing would allow the city to be making some money from it and be like branding. And this is the Meyer that I'm going to be using because it's spitting distance from my house. And I kind of want to, I would appreciate seeing the big orange arrow in it because that's what's close to my heart, you know what I mean? It's right there and that's where I'm going to be walking to or riding my bike to or it's too close to drive, so I can't do that. So I'm not supporting the motion, but I would consider a different type of motion to, for licensing.
Commissioner Dubat.
So I'm going to support the motion to deny in this case, but because I'm aligned with Commissioner Douglas, like, I don't want to do it on the fly and say yes to them, even though, like, in my heart, it seems cool. I would love to say yes to Meyer, but I don't want to say yes to Meyer because I like Meyer and then not know where to go with the next one. So licensing guidelines, so we have a real solid legal framework for how and when we say yes or no and why, I would, that I think would be worthwhile to have. So I support the motion to deny, but not because I don't think we can eventually find a way to use our, allow our brand to be used that way. We just need to make sure we have that all tightened up before we start letting people do it.
Commissioner Perusch.
And once we get those guidelines in place, Meyer can come back if they think that they comply with them, which they probably would. So it's not like no to Meyer forever, but if we're going to move in the direction of guidelines, which I think is appropriate, then they can come back. But we, I think we need to have those in place first.
Commissioner Vassar?
Are we through this motion asking staff to develop guidelines? Or is that something that...
Different motion.
It's a different motion. This is just a deny right now.
Want to make a motion?
Not at this time.
Yeah, I think for me, I mean, I get the concept of opening up a can of worms. At the same time, I think that, you know, this is a pretty interesting development. It's a new development. There's an opportunity here to enter into a discussion. That discussion can help inform us as far as how and what we want with those guidelines. I don't think you're going to find too many opportunities like this to do something, so I'm not sure that, you know, it would be proliferated overnight. I do agree we need licensing, guidelines and boundaries and things like that. I think we've talked about it. We've talked about, I mean, we did this for a reason, for our brand to get out there so people understand Royal Oak. Those 10,000 people a day that visit Beaumont Hospital are going to go to this grocery store. And, you know, I'd love for them to see that Royal Oak logo there. As discretionary as my comments are, and I don't know if you'd have guidelines that would say, you know, oh, only do it at places that, you know, the mayor loves. But I think in this particular instance, it feels right, it sounds right. And, you know, I do think we need guidelines, but I think, you know, it's a missed opportunity not to line it up with such a cool concept with so many different people coming from around. I mean, that was the whole purpose why we rebranded. It's not our city seal. It's not an endorsement on anybody. It's not the, you know... That. That goes out on letters and things like that of official correspondence. It's something we created to, you know, underscore the amazing things we have going on here, Life Now Playing. And I think no matter what opportunity you find, you're going to have to always look at that creative context of Life Now Playing to find that co-brand opportunity. And it's not always going to be scientific. Sometimes judgment calls are going to have to be made. So for me, I would, I appreciate everything that Commissioner Perusch is saying and others, but I would at least like to explore it. I mean, it doesn't mean we have to sign an agreement, so. I'll probably be the lone vote. Okay. Got a motion on the table? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Wait.
Show of hands. Show of hands of the nose. One, two, three. Four, three.
Should we re-vote?
I don't think we have to.
Maybe we should restate the motion and then...
To deny.
Motion is to deny.
Motion is to deny, so I'm voting in favor of that then.
So you voted in favor. Say the ayes to deny. Show of hands for the ayes to deny. Okay. So four, three.
And then...
The nose.
Motion passes four, three, to deny.
To deny.
Motion was approved four to three.
That's correct.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to explore and present to the commission guidelines for licensing the, our brand and our logo.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas, supported by Commissioner Dubat. Discussion? With none? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. I would hope that Myers would come back and once we have these guidelines done, there might be one or two other votes of reconsideration for having a logo up there. All right. That moves us to item number 16, which is the consideration of an ordinance to ban the sales of animals obtained from mills, including but not limited to dogs, cats, rabbits, as requested by Mayor Protem Douglas, Mayor Fournier and Commissioner Perusch.
Will it be me?
Yeah.
So when I contemplated when to put this on an agenda, I consulted city manager Don Johnson, who said, well, we've got these back-to-back meetings in May, the 13th and the 20th. And usually when that happens, the earlier meeting is jam-packed and the second meeting is a really light agenda. So I'm blaming Don. I was approached, and thank you for the Humane Society representatives for staying around. I was approached by Ms. Tamilevich, Commissioner Macy as well, back in probably January on this subject. And we thought that they made a compelling argument. And I'm not, I will try to summarize what we heard from speakers here tonight, including the representatives from the Humane Society, from our own animal shelter director, that puppy mills are places where animals are abused, not kept well, not treated well. They generate products that are sold in pet stores and customers buy potentially damaged products. They reduce the inclination for...
They reduce the inclination for pet, for people to adopt by making these potentially flawed animals available. The ordinance, the draft ordinance that you see has been vetted through the Humane Society in other states. It does protect the work of legitimate breed, breeder, purebred breeders. Right now, we have two pet stores in Royal Oak, neither of which at this time offers puppies or animals from commercial mills for sale, but that doesn't mean they won't. That doesn't mean we won't ultimately have a pet store that would want to do that. And also, as was pointed out, cities around Southeast Michigan, around Michigan, look to Royal Oak as a role model, and I'm happy to provide that role model, to protect the people of our city, to protect animals, and to provide a model that they can carry forward throughout the state of Michigan in introducing this draft ordinance. And I guess I'll go with a motion that asks the city attorney to take into consideration the draft that the Humane Society has provided for us and to customize it to the nature of our city and bring it back to the commission for potential approval.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas, second by Commissioner Macy.
Can I talk?
Discussion? No, you're forbidden.
I just, I don't want to massively interrupt anyone. I just wanted to add one thing, which was that this does not prevent the Humane Society or some other organization from coming into a pet store like you see frequently where they have adoption Wednesdays or whatever, weekends. That still is allowed. It's not that you can't sell pets, even though they're at cost, it's just these puppy mills specifically.
And as I say, their representatives are in the audience if anybody has any questions.
I'll just add that, you know, I got my dog from the Royal Oak Animal Shelter, and he's amazing. So, healthy, he's a good guy.
That's not what you said when he was chewing your furniture.
I know, right?
There have been a few occasions that, you know, we've had some pretty direct dialogue after he chewed up a very nice pair of shoes of mine within the first few days, but we figured out who was boss, and now I report to him, and it's fine.
Oh, Winston.
So, Commissioner Dubat?
I just wanted to add that, you know, thank you for being here and for waiting it out. Appreciate, you know, your passion for the issue, and thank you, Commissioner Douglas, for bringing this forward.
Yeah, this is one of these things that, you know, it's good to get ahead of, and we're grateful for everyone that helped us get ahead of it because, you know, frankly, you know, one were to move in and we were to have this issue, it's so hard to say, oh, if we would have only thought. So I'm glad that people are thinking and, you know, making sure we're looking out for the best of, you know, our friends. So, we got a motion on the table, I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. That brings us to the end of our agenda, notwithstanding anything of significant importance that will offer up to the betterment of the entire community at whole. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Commissioner Gibbs moves to adjourn. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas.
I was waving my hand.
Any discussion on this very important matter? With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. We're adjourned.